City Council Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Housing Authority, regular meeting. We have a group here tonight who is going to lead us in the pledge and then do a little talk about the wonderful things they do for our community. So would you, with the 4H representatives, like to come forward? Should we all stand?
Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
We look forward to your presentation in a couple of minutes. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda, either from staff or from the dais?
Nothing from staff this evening, Mr. Chair.
Everybody okay with as-is? Good, then we will stick with that, which brings us back to getting a presentation from the San Carlos Eaton Hills 4H Club on the services that you provide. So if you'd like to join us up at the podium, that'd be great.
Maya Donovan, I'm the president of the San Carlos Eaton Hills 4H Club and a senior at Sequoia.
Can I make a suggestion? You might want to speak into the microphone. We actually, believe it or not, we have a TV audience, so you're live on camera. So that's how people hear you.
No pressure. Okay. I'm Maya Donovan. I'm the president of the San Carlos Eaton Hills 4H Club and I'm a senior. So 4H is a youth development organization that's dedicated to developing citizenship, leadership, responsibility, and life skills in its members through hands-on learning and positive experience. Our 4H club is situated at Clifford Middle School, and we have about 126 active members and 57 active adult volunteers. Our members are aged five to 18, and about 70% of our members come from San Carlos. We have deep ties to the San Carlos community. So in our club, offers a wide variety of projects, from lambs and goats, all the way to backpacking, Hands Across the Generations, Advanced STEM, and more. So I'm speaking on behalf of the farm and all the animals that we have on the farm, which are pigs, lambs, goats. We also have dairy goats this year, which is very exciting. Chickens and turkeys. This year, I'm raising a lamb, a goat, and chickens, and I just came from the farm from feeding my lamb and my goat. Our farm's a cooperative farm, and it's multi-age, ranging from ages nine to 18, and it helps build skills like organization, time management, and communication. We also have show rabbits and chickens that aren't on the farm but are also our animal projects. And I think a part of 4H that often gets overlooked is the life skill aspect of it. So we have projects that deal with the community, we have projects that involve creative endeavors, we have projects that involve the outdoors. So for example, we have lots of community service-oriented projects like Hands Across the Generations, Community Detectives, and the JTL project, which help kids engage with their communities and learn more about them, and through that, they become inspired to do more works like this in the future. Some of our creative projects include weaving, crochet, woodworking, and photography, which I think is really awesome, because oftentimes, these are things that we overlook, and they give kids an opportunity to be exposed to these things and then potentially really end up liking. And even though some of these things might not be, you know, what you end up doing in the future, you learn skills from the projects that are extremely valuable, like patience, fine motor skills, and you can become, gain a deeper understanding of yourself through work in these projects. I think really the best thing about 4H is that it gives students an exposure to a wide variety of interests and topics that you might never think of pursuing, and in doing so, you learn more about yourself and about your community. And lots of the lessons you learn apply to other aspects of your life. For example, you can learn patience, perseverance, empathy, problem-solving, and self-advocacy through 4H projects. Being a good leader in 4H helps make us better leaders in the community after practicing the skills that Maya just discussed. We used to be the little kids running around the meeting, looking up to the big kids, and now we're the big kids. So I think that's a really cool experience, to be the people that little kids look up to, and how much we've grown in the past six, or seven, or even eight years. We have a lot of projects in our club that help serve the community, both directly and indirectly. Yeah, so one of those projects is Hands Across the Generations, where members from our club go and visit the Elms, and they do activities with the residents, visit with them, and spend time, and bridge the generational gap there. Our Community Detectives project is very active in the community. They clean up local parks, and in the past, they've served hot chocolate at the night of the Holiday Lights booth. And our local, our STEM project is having a booth at the Redwood City Steam Fest in April, where they will be gathering together people from STEAM and SET projects in the area to present to the local kids and encourage them to go into STEM fields and pursue those activities. In this past year, we hosted booths at the San Carlos History Museum Pancake Breakfast, and also at the San Carlos Industrial Arts Business Association Car Show and Community Event. We were also able to bring our animals to the public and give talks to the public about animal care. We were also able to host Animal Day at the library during the summer, which was a great experience for everyone. We do bring our animals places. We bring them to the Hometown Days Fair, where we bring them in the parade, and we get to talk to the public and educate them, and we also have a booth there. And a big part of our farm, the goal, is to get to the San Mateo County Fair, which is a great experience. It is a really fun week, right? When school gets out, and we're able to help educate the public through showmanship and answering questions, and I think it really rounds out the whole year. You know, it's this big, exciting thing that happens at the end of the 4H year that helps it feel like it's all worth it. We also, a big part of our club and immersing ourselves in the community is the Lions Club. We work hand-in-hand with the Lions Club to do a variety of projects and events, and we also collaborated then when we went to the San Carlos History Museum. So the 4H motto is "Hands, Heart," oh, sorry, "Head, Heart, Hands, and Health." And 4H really does its part to strengthen all of those aspects of your life, and it turns out some really well-rounded individuals who have a vested interest in helping their community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Things about 4H that I did not know, I don't know about anybody else, so thank you very much for sharing all that.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is recognition of two of our wonderful sheriff's deputies, Andre Bray and Christopher Arminiano? Close? Armino. That's it. I forgot to do the preamble about I mess up last names. For their heroic actions on May 31st, 2018, which I believe is going to be the subject of the chief's little presentation.
It is.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chief Mark Dury. Good evening, City Council, Mr. Chair, City Manager, and City Staff. I'd like to introduce Deputy Chris Arminino and Andre Bray, and tonight, we're going to be recognizing their heroic actions in a lifesaving effort that they did last year. Here's the synopsis of the event. On May 31st, 2018, at approximately 10:00 a.m., Deputies Arminino and Bray were dispatched to 990 Laurel Street, Suite C, in the city of San Carlos on a medical aid call. The San Mateo County Public Safety Communications advised the patient was a female adult in her 50s who was unconscious and not breathing after going into cardiac arrest. Deputies Arminino and Bray arrived on scene and found Ms. Marnie Love unconscious, not breathing, and lying motionless on the floor. Deputies Arminino and Bray quickly took action and initiated CPR on Ms. Love. Deputy Bray attended, attempted to locate a pulse, but was unable to find one. Deputy Arminino administered a series of chest compressions, and after about one minute, Ms. Love began to breathe on her own. Deputies Arminino and Bray then attempted to speak to Ms. Love and visually monitor her vital signs, but she quickly stopped breathing once again and fell unconscious. Deputy Bray, for a second time, tried to locate her pulse, but Ms. Love, on Ms. Love, but could not find one. Deputy Arminino started a second round of chest compressions on Ms. Love and tried to revive her, and the two continuously worked on her until the fire department arrived on scene. San Carlos Fire Engine 13 arrived on scene and took over CPR from the deputies. After working on Ms. Love for a few additional minutes, fire applied an automated external defibrillator, also known as an AED. Ms. Love responded to the AED shocks and began breathing on her own and regained consciousness. Ms. Love was subsequently transported to the Sequoia Hospital for further treatment and evaluation. Ms. Love spent a week in intensive care, in the intensive care unit, and has since made a full recovery. Without the heroic actions and swift response of deputies Arminino and Bray to initiate CPR and provide medical aid, Ms. Love would have likely not have survived that day, according to the fire captain Dave Gillette. The lifesaving measures taken by both these deputies are a testament to their character, their professionalism, and should serve as an inspiration to their peers. Deputies Arminino and Bray showed their dedication and commitment to serving and protecting the citizens of San Carlos, and demonstrated the very best work ethic that is expected of members of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. It is for these reasons I would like to recognize deputies Arminino and Bray for their instinctual and selfless lifesaving actions. Ladies and gentlemen, Deputy Christopher Arminino and Deputy Andre Bray.
You know, so often, most of us think of law enforcement as stopping people from doing things they're not supposed to be doing. It's very gratifying and very moving to hear about one of the other things you guys do all the time, which is to make things start again. You did a great job, and thank you on behalf of the community.
Thank you.
Did anybody else in the dais want to make comments? I forgot to ask that before. That's okay. All right. Next on our agenda, we will receive a presentation on the Gun Buyback Program.
Good evening, San Carlos City Council. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Danielle Lacampagna, and I'm here with Becky Dodson and Dr. Brad Silver. Also joining us today is Chief Dury, who is our lead, actually, on the buyback program, so he can answer questions at the end about the particulars about the firearms. So we're honored to be here to report back about the May and the December 2018 buyback. And as you see from this first slide, is a shot of the aerial, arrow shot of the buyback in process in Redwood City, and some shots of the, some of the 867 weapons that we were returned in that day. We, like many citizens, were looking for concrete ways to address gun tragedy, and in late February 2018, we met with Sheriff Bolanos, and we're really thrilled when he agreed to work with us. We wanted to implement another gun buyback, and he liked the idea and agreed to implement the event, advertise the gun buyback, but he said that we'd have to raise the $75,000 funds at minimum that would be required to give back to residents who wanted to surrender their weapons. So we faked with all of our might, our confidence, and our fundraising abilities, and agreed to do so. And this is a letter that Sheriff Bolanos gave us that helped us in our search for funds. So we approached almost all San Mateo County towns and cities, and we hoped to galvanize the community. We attended many council meetings. Our presentation focused on suicide, because suicide by gun far outweighs homicide by gun. In fact, according to our coroner's office, this past year, 2018, there were 27 suicides by gun in San Mateo County, and nine homicides by gun, and one that was undetermined. So therefore, we focused on suicide, and we raised, we ended up raising $140,000. It was not lost on us that the momentum at the time and the grief that our nation was experiencing due to the mass shootings, and also the inspiration of the Parkland kids, we had them on our side while we were doing our fundraising. Here's a list of the contributors to the San Mateo County Gun Buyback. First and foremost, we want to thank this city council, who blew us away, actually, when we were here one night, and they offered $50,000 matching funds, which really got us through the beginning of our fundraising, really started us off in a very big way, and we were forever grateful for that. Also worth mentioning, Woodside, which not only gave $10,000, they also energized the students in their district, and the kids at elementary, the elementary school, Woodside Elementary, they held a bake sale and raised $800, and their town matched that. Portola Valley, they also gave $10,000, and they energized their residents, and they gave $1,875, and they matched that. So people really used it to galvanize their community, which is what we really wanted. There are many purposes of the buyback, and we learned a lot in the last two buybacks. One, it was a community service to rid your home, or residence's home of unwanted and unsecured firearms. During the buybacks, we distributed these, these type of free gun cable locks, which were greatly appreciated. We distributed over 200 of these. We used it as an opportunity to disseminate education about gun safety and suicide prevention, so we gave out pamphlets like this to people who attended. We furthered research on buybacks, and with these two events, we received seven, I'm sorry, 370 anonymous and voluntary surveys, which gave us a wealth of information that we'll be going over. And we increased the number of gun-free homes, which we'll also go over a little bit later. Here's a slide which shows the breakdowns of what kind of firearms were surrendered. We were surprised that December was a little bit more successful than May, since it was our second that, that year. We were surprised by those kind of numbers. There were 40 assault weapons, and it shows how much money we distributed. We still have $54,000 remaining, and that, and any additional funds that we raise, will be used for future gun buybacks and gun safety education in San Mateo County. We distributed $100 for rifle, shotguns, and firearms, I mean, handguns, and 200 for assault-type weapons. And this slide is of the three most dangerous weapons from each of the buybacks. At the end, Chief Dury had offered to come on up and talk more intelligently about those type of weapons. At least two of these caused quite a stir that they were turned in, and were quite powerful. So he's happy to come up at the end. He was our, our lead on the buyback, and we worked closely with him throughout both events. I'm going to turn it over to Becky for a little bit more on research.
So as Danielle mentioned, we handed out surveys at both buybacks. So this top row shows some of the demographic information that we got back. So that, top left, for both buybacks combined, you can see that majority men were turning in their weapons, 74%. Majority white, Caucasian, for December, but it was the same for May as well. And then majority, 55 years of age or older. So these demographics suggest that with our outreach, we could try to focus more on trying to grab Latino residents especially, because we were only able, that's at 6%, and they make up 24.5% of our county. So there on the bottom left, you can see how people obtained the firearms that they turned in. Almost half of the turned-in guns were inherited, so it kind of highlights that these, these are guns that are, people are giving back that are unwanted guns. And then there on the lower right, you can see that almost half of those who turned in their weapons or their firearms were not trained. So this highlights that almost half the respondents haven't been trained, which is encouraging because it suggests that these are unsafe firearms that we are able to get back from, from members of the community and are removing from homes. So this next slide shows, how did you hear about the buyback? 55% heard about the buyback from news or radio. By far the most effective means of raising awareness. So we wanted to give a special thanks to the Sheriff's Office, who, especially the Public Information Officer Rosemary Blankswade, who put on that effort. A close, or not a close second, but second was postcard. So as we'll highlight later, San Carlos was the only city that sent out a postcard to all of its residents about the buyback, and then... all of its residents about the buyback, and then ended up having a disproportionately high participation rate. So this suggests that it's a highly effective means of reaching people with this kind of effort. Okay, next slide shows how many homes are now gun-free. 62% are now gun-free homes, and of those, of those gun-free homes that are gun-free post-buyback, 96% said that they did not plan to get a gun in the future. So that's encouraging. All right, next slide is just the breakdown of respondents who completed the survey by county, San Mateo County residents, vast majority of 77%. And with that, I will hand it over to Brad.
So the next slide shows the fact that Redwood City had the most number of individuals involved with the gun buyback, and San Carlos was, was very close behind. Of course, Redwood City is a much larger city. So we break that down by compared to the population, and San Carlos obviously blew away the rest of the cities. San Carlos clearly was in the lead for the number of people involved compared to the population, and you can see the rest of the cities fall down based on population and things such as that. So San Carlos was clearly our, our best response. And we think it's because of this, because you all were willing to sign out these postcards, and as Becky said, no other city did. In the first gun buyback in Mar, in May, 31 participants were from San Carlos, 18.5%, which is still higher than you would expect. But in the second gun buyback, it was even more extensive, the San Carlos response. 82% of the San Carlos residents who participated in May due to the postcard now live in gun-free houses versus 54% of the overall participants. We think the postcards are very effective, and on the right side, you do see the postcard that you all were very kind and sent out and really made a tremendous difference in getting a response. This is, talks about how easy it was. In the first gun buyback in May, 42% said very easy, 25% somewhat easy, and we got better the second time. I think we, we learned a few things. So it was very easy, very few of the participants found it difficult. It was a very, very good program. I want to make a few comments I'm going to read. These are right off the surveys, and as they said, Becky and Danielle said those were voluntary surveys. These are just some comments that people made. A family member is depressed and expressing he wants to die, that's why they came. Another person said there was a new baby in the house. Another person said they lost a 17-year-old stepson due to gun violence. Another person, we found two guns in the attic and wanted to get rid of them. Another one, there was domestic violence in the family. Another one, guns belonged to someone who has mental illness, and we brought the guns on their behalf. So clearly, these are individuals who did not want these weapons and thought they were a threat, and, and found this opportunity to be very good. We had great press coverage. Again, thanks to the sheriff's office and thanks to some news media in the area. We had good publicity before and after the event, which we think was very helpful. So we want to thank everybody for the support that we got to make this happen. The sheriff's office was incredible. They did such a beautiful job that day at the buyback, making all the participants feel very comfortable. We want to thank U.S. Representative Jackie Speer. She came to both gun buybacks, and you can see her photo up there. And she actually walked the line and talked to people in their cars before they turned in their weapons, which I thought was great, and really thanked people for coming. And as part of this effort, we got some publicity. On the right side, you can see David Hogg and Ryan Deitch, two of the Parkland students who came to the community, and we were able to meet with them and talk to them and learn from them. It was great. So, and the last person to thank is Nilu Jenks, who's not here tonight because Nilu has moved to Seattle. I've been with the organization now since October. Nilu is just a dynamite person. I think most of you know her, and we, we miss her in our group. She's fabulous. She's trying to get the same effort started in Seattle, her new community, and so she, she's, we miss her. She's great. So thanks to Nilu if you're watching tonight. Are there any questions?
Thank you, guys. Very well done. I see that there are at least some questions. Adam?
Thank you for the presentation. It's great, and congratulations on the success that you had. So I just had a couple questions in terms of, I noticed, I think, some of your stats in, in terms of location, obviously Redwood City and San Carlos were, were sort of, maybe most successful out of places. Are there thoughts around maybe doing something in the North County, given that you had sort of less of a turnout over there? I mean, I know you hit both in Redwood City, which is great. I'm glad you're taking more guns off the street in San Carlos, but be curious if it's sort of doing this more countywide.
The first gun buyback in May, I believe Daly City had one the same day, and so there, the northern side of the county was not that represented in May because of that reason. So we have talked about, the sheriff's office looked tirelessly for a very safe place to have it, which I've realized was very important. That was an amazing lot that had great visibility, and it was close to transportation. It didn't have a lot around it, so it was a very safe setting. So I guess it, it could be explored. We talked about also on the coast, but it really, the tendence to safety and finding the right venue would have to be discussed.
Great. You'd find this hard to believe, but it was very difficult to find a venue to hold this because our traffic plan was pretty elaborate, getting people in and out. I mean, we had, at times, we had over 100 cars waiting in line. And so we have to have a traffic plan as far as in case we need ingress egress and if there's an emergency. And we also need, had a plan to where, last time it didn't happen, but the time we did it back in 2013, there was people coming along the lines trying to buy the guns before they got to us and offering more money. And so we had a plan this time, last time we did it, and this time to stop them, we had our motors to try to inspire people not to do that, and it worked. And so we had, the venue we had is perfect. And Daly City had one at, I think, in the Cow Palace, and their efforts only got them, I think, 40 guns. So they kind of took care of the north end, but we advertise it countywide to the Police Chiefs Association and through each city, and I just think it's really effective the way we do it here in the venue, so.
And just a quick follow-up, and then I'll, and just on the capacity, sort of, you've gotten some good numbers. I mean, do you think, is that sort of the capacity that you can get at a buyback? Do you think, given the size and location, or can you, I mean, can you hit 300, can you hit 350? And in terms of numbers, so if you're doing more postcards, right, you said the postcard had good outreach. If you're able to do it in other cities, and all of a sudden you've got 500 people that want to turn in guns, what, can you manage it at that site? And what's some plans around that?
We could manage it at that site. We could extend the, the hours of operation. Both times, we opened a half hour early because we got there early set up, and when's the line, when the lines started, we opened up right away. So, and we were really surprised because the first time we did it in May, it started out very quickly. I mean, the lines were huge. But December 15th, I, was kind of risky because that was National Gun Buyback Day. There was one in Sunnyvale, one in Santa Clara, one in San Jose. San Francisco was even offering more money than we were, and they were offering $20 for BB guns. So a lot of people were going there. So we didn't know what our success was, and we got more guns than we did in May, so it was very successful. Truthfully, it's about advertising. That's really what gets this going, the radio ads and how San Carlos does the postcards. Because I got a chance to walk around with Jackie Speer, and she asked me why San Carlos was so successful. And I said, it's really because of the postcards. And she asked me why other communities don't do that, and I, and I told, I informed her that would be a question for their city managers. So, because we're going to continue to do it because we have the stats to prove it. I mean, this, in this town of 29,000 people, look at the guns we got off the street. I mean, it's just fabulous.
Thank you, and congratulations again.
Laura?
Great. Well, congratulations and thank you for doing this very important public service. It's clear that it serves the needs of many people, so thank you for that. Two questions. One is, you mentioned that you had a certain amount of money left, so my question is, are there plans to continue this in the future and do more fundraising? And then secondly, just given the incredible success that you had, is there, are you thinking about trying to put this in some sort of a package or best practices that could be shared with other communities who may have interest?
Great questions. We are heading off onto another fundraising venture. As you saw from that one slide, there are some cities that had not donated for whatever reason, and we are going to be meeting with them again. Some of them, some of them, I think, would be very inclined to do that after they see the kind of results that we had. So that's one, and your, your next question was about more of a national kind of?
Putting it into some format that other cities could replicate, like a list of best practices or...
Well, Nilu actually is looking at that, doing more of a model and write-up of the formula that we used, which was successful. I've had a lot of inquiries from different, like somebody from Colorado, and I were batting back and forth ideas, people who are trying to do this in their own city. We have a part, one of our partners is Gun by Gun, who holds our funds, and they're, they're a nonprofit that we had an MOU with at the very beginning. And Ian Johnston from Gun by Gun is really interested also in promoting gun buybacks. That's really what he's, he's a, he's a gentleman who started Gun by Gun after he lost his father due to somebody who shot his father who had stolen a gun from a house. So if you want to look it up, it's a very great organization that we've gotten to know, and they're, they're also looking at doing more of a blueprint to take it nationally. And if you know Nilu, she's one that's going to likely run with that in Seattle and do something like that, that's more formal, a formal kind of blueprint to this kind of process.
Yeah, thank you very much. That was for all of you. That was a great presentation and great work, Danielle and Becky and Brad, and Nilu, wherever you are, hopefully you are listening in. I have a couple of questions. Actually, let me start with one. It sort of dovetails off the second question that Laura asked, but it's, it's really for the chief, which is, given the success that's been demonstrated by this, is the sheriff, the program, this type of program, is the sheriff's department considering making this a recurring event itself and budgeting funds for it? And please don't misinterpret that. It's not like I'm unsupportive of making another contribution to, to the effort, but it's, 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 to the extent that it's an effective way of reducing the risk of gun violence, that's sort of a law enforcement thing. And if, and I'm just curious if, if that's ever been discussed within, within the department?
Yes, the sheriff is willing to support this logistically like we have been doing.
Okay.
So it's a good partnership between the Citizens of Gun Buyback and the sheriff's office, and as you can see through our stats, the formula does work.
Has there been any discussion, and I'm not asking for privy thing, be privy to things that are not public, but has there been any discussion about particularly, potentially putting some financial resources behind it as well, beyond logistics? In other words, the actual funds used to purchase back the firearms?
That's, we, we don't raise any money. The sheriff last time, the time before donated $5,000, but usually the, the money that we put is, we put it in personnel, and the, and the hundreds of man-hours that people don't realize, we scrutinize every single weapon, all 868 weapons of the last two gun buybacks. We scrutinized every single one. We found stolen ones, one that were used in crimes, and just kind of the, the behind-the-scenes part of this, people don't understand as far as logging every single one, putting it on a report-writing system and taking it to destruction, and just, we put a lot, a lot of man-hours into this. So logistically is, is the way we're going to support this.
Fair enough. Let's see. I had a couple other things I wanted to ask. Oh, one just was to refresh my memory. The postcard that San Carlos sent out, that was your idea, right, Jeff? I would just like to recognize, since my memory was correct this time, that it was your idea, and since everybody's been talking about what a great idea it was, I hope that gets you some kudos at the city council, city managers association meeting.
As long as it gets more guns out of the community, I think that'll be all the kudos any of us need.
Well, I will say, in all seriousness, I, given the success that it demonstrated, I hope it's something that you're sharing with your, your colleagues, because it's something they ought to be thinking about doing themselves. The last question I had is, I forget, when Brad was going through some of the later-stage data analysis, I, I caught the notion that there were, I got the sense that there were some people who, they, they had inherited the weapons, and they were basically just looking to get rid of them. And the question I had is, and again, not to try and minimize the financial commitment from a future council action here, but are there people who would be willing, if there was a safe and non-threatening way of turning in a weapon without being paid to do so, that they would do that? I mean, I, what struck me is the, every police station I've seen in San Mateo County has like the needle drop-offs and the drug drop-off things and whatnot. So just curious if that's been discussed.
During the gun buyback event, we promote that anyone can come in to our station at any time and turn in a weapon, or we will respond to their residents and accept their weapons. So...
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, so anytime, and ammunition as well. So we will take it 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So a lot of people don't know that, so we advertise that as well. Just, we do the gun buyback through the Citizens of Gun Buyback as well in a partnership to kind of promote this, to get that, the message out there. But yeah, we collect, the sheriff's office probably 300 or 400 guns a year. The people just come to our station here and all over the county and turn them in.
Okay. Again, Danielle, it looks like you wanted to add something.
I forgot to say that there were several people who did not take funds. In fact, one person who came and brought in at least a dozen assault, assault weapons mostly, and he walked away. He could have gotten a whole stack of chips, and they translated into money at the end, so it would translate into 3,000, and he wanted to return it to the buyback program. So he walked away with no funds. So if you, if you did the math while that, that slide was up, you'd see it doesn't quite match. So there are people that do come. We did, we did run into a couple people who tried that, not in San, not in San Carlos or necessarily in any city in particular that they told us, but that they weren't successful in getting a police officer. They'd waited at their house or something of that nature. Logistically, they found it hard to do that. And plus, I think there's some safety implications of just carrying a firearm if you're somebody that inherited, didn't know, don't know much about, you know, the rules around that. So this was well-publicized of what to do to keep it in your trunk, so people probably felt safe following that procedure.
Fair enough. Thank you. Jeff, just as a thought for your consideration, maybe one of the next quarterly newsletters, there could be a little squib in there about, because I wasn't aware of what the chief said about that, about having this, and since there seem to be so many people in San Carlos who are willing to turn them in, they might as well make them aware of that. And by the way, chief, congratulations. You have a career in politics ahead of you. That answer you gave Jackie was, was very, very on target, except the right answer is because it's San Carlos. Okay. There you go. Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it. Thank you for all the great work. All right. That brings us to the section for public comment. This is a period of time when anyone may address the council on an item not on the agenda. There will be time for, to address some items that are on the agenda as we go through each item. I don't have any cards tonight. Crystal, do we have any? We don't have any cards tonight. Okay, so we will pass through the public comment section. Next section is consent calendar. These are items that are typically approved en masse and without discussion, although any individual council member may ask to have an item pulled off the consent calendar for separate discussion and action. I'll entertain a motion to either approve, approve the calendar, or if there's somebody who wants to pull an item off, please say so.
I move to approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through E and Item F, adopting Ordinance Number 1539, an ordinance to the City Council of the City of San Carlos, amending San Carlos Municipal Code Title 18, zoning, consistency of modifications to Chapter 18.24, wireless telecommunications facilities, and rescinding Chapter 12.32, wireless telecommunications facilities.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Councilmember Collins is absent.
That passes unanimously. Before we move on, just for the benefit of both our new colleagues and for anybody who's watching us, Greg, would you mind explaining briefly to people why we have the item, for example, Item F spelled out and read out in detail as opposed to just referencing it?
Well, I, I think our, our practice, as you introduce, you, when you pass an ordinance, you introduce an ordinance at the first meeting, and then it's just good practice to actually read the, the title and what you're amending at the, at, when you're actually adopting the ordinance. It calls it out, and it's being, it's on the record very clearly that you intended to adopt that ordinance tonight.
Because it's, it's the adoption, basically, you're trying, you're trying to highlight.
And then ordinances are effective 30 days from the date of adoption.
So 30 days from tonight, for example, for this one. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to study session, Item 7A. We're receiving a presentation on the City of San Carlos sewer... We're receiving a presentation on the City of San Carlos sewer rates. Good evening, Steve.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, City Councilmembers. Stephen Machida, Public Works Director. I also have with me Alex Handlers from Bartle Wells, and he will actually do some of the presentation. But before we start with Alex, I just wanted to give you maybe a little overview of the study session and what we intend to cover. What I'd like to do is probably just go real quickly, but before, as I mentioned, it is a study session, so we're not really specifically asking you to take any actions, however, just to provide direction to us, so when we come back at the next meeting, we'll actually have something that you could act on. All right. Very quick. Okay. So, first of all, I would like to start kind of importance of maintenance of the sewer. So as City Councilmembers realize, our city's sanitary sewer infrastructure is probably about 50 to 100 years old. By standards, that's probably a pretty old system. Basically, from an engineering standpoint, we look at, you know, probably 50-year lifespan is what we would normally say that reaches its end of life. However, for sewer systems generally, I mean, certainly they can go much longer, say 70 years, but anything over 70, you know, in just 100 years is certainly old. So obviously, our system is fairly old. As I mentioned, because it's an old system, there is some ongoing maintenance. If you really think about, look like your car, if you get a brand-new car, your ongoing maintenance is probably very small initially, but as it gets older and older, you know, you have to spend a little bit more effort to maintain your car itself. Well, this is very similar to that, it's just that it's a very long or very old car. This one is actually going to, you know, approximately 100 years old. So over time, you actually have to spend a lot more effort, whether it's cleaning, replacing pipes, replacing pumps, kind of doing a lot more effort just to kind of keep the pipe flowing. So as a result, over time, because it's a very large span, we have incurred some pipe failures. Basically, pipe fails, root intrusion, some of it is a result of kind of old material just failing, some of it is perhaps materials that really wasn't good in the first place. It kind of died or it kind of eroded over time, probably within the first 10 years. And then we also had earthquake issues or land subsidence, settlement problems as a result of, we're in an earthquake country, and therefore, the pipe, when it was originally placed, was actually, had moved because of ground movement. And so that causes some fatigues and failure of the pipe. So as a result of some of the fatigue, we actually experienced a lot of overflows and failures of our system. And so as a result, and I believe it was about 2008, 2009, we actually replaced an consent decree, and because of the failures and some of the overflows that we actually had incurred to that date. For most of you, you know a consent decree is pretty serious, and certainly the regional board looks at that very closely. They obviously want you to kind of repair and get your system back in order. So immediate action was really required. So part of the consent decree, we agreed to do our closed caption TV or CCTV of our sanitary sewer every five years. And basically, there are several ways you could do it. You could do it one year and do the entire system, or you could take like a fifth of your system and do that fifth each year. Part of the CIP improvements is that we look at to repair and place sewers with a condition of a grade five per the Pipe Assessment Certification Program, or P A C P. And that's a kind of a national standard that they use that grades sewer pipes. And basically, it goes from a scale of one to five, where one is essentially a new pipe, and five is a kind of a failure or failed pipe. We also had to upgrade our sanitary sewers, or excuse me, sanitary pump stations, of which we have six. We also need to look at our sewer system capacity, which is that, which means is, are our pipes too small? In other words, being this an older city, a lot of our pipes are actually probably pretty small, six-inch, six-inch mains. If you really think about your sewer ladder coming out of your house, that typically is a four-inch main. So if, you know, a six-inch main might be carrying 50 homes, you know, is that too We also need to look at the overall reduction plan of sewer, mainly like they call it INI or inflow infiltration. So we actually need to do smoke testing to determine if we have any leaks in our pipe system, or anybody actually dumping stormwater directly into the sanitary sewer. We need to improve our investigation response and reporting of how we report our SSOs. And then we looked at our, a little better fats, oil, and grease program, or they call it FOG as the acronym. And basically, what we're looking for is any type of people dump fats, oil, and grease into some, into the sewer, it actually clogs your drains, or, I mean, similar to what you have in your home, it would clog your drain and cause SSOs. And then the other thing that we wanted to look at is a different way of maintaining our sewer system. So there's some mechanical means where you might router it out, or there's a hydraulic means where you flush it out. But I think we also wanted to look at a chemical root control, where basically, it's you stick foam into the main, and you let it kind of adhere to the roots, and ultimately, those roots will die and leave the pipe itself. And the reason I bring all this up is, you know, besides some of the capital improvement projects that I've brought to you here at the past couple meetings of all the pipes and laterals that we want to do, we also want to really make sure you understand that a lot of the, what goes into rate is also kind of the maintenance that we need to do, but especially with what we just accomplished or completed, actually coming out of the consent decree, which was, I believe, was in 2017. It took us about eight years to really kind of ramp up all the resources that we had to do, the money that we had to spend, to actually get in a position where we're kind of in a good, good spot, where, you know, we're not really overflowing and having some of the SSOs that we're seeing in the past. And so we really want to maintain kind of the momentum that we have accomplished these past, you know, eight, eight years, mainly because we don't want the SSOs. Obviously, it is a health and safety issue, and so therefore, we want to proceed and continue with our, our program itself. So that really kind of concludes my short little presentation, unless there's any other questions, I'll turn this over to Alex Handlers, and he'll go specifically over to the rate study.
Sounds good.
Thanks, nice to see everybody here. My name's Alex Handlers, I'm with the firm Bartle Wells Associates. We've worked for the city since about 2013, doing, you know, sewer rates and financial planning. Our firm specializes in water and sewer rates, utility finance. We've worked for about 500 agencies around California, including many of your neighboring agencies here on the, on the peninsula. But left click, is it to, yes, okay. So I was going to give a quick background of kind of what we see from our financial perspective, and talk about what we see going forward in terms of necessary rate increases to keep you on track. Quick background, as Stephen was mentioning, the city operates a sewer collection system, and you transport the waste that you collect to an influent force main, and eventually to Silicon Valley Clean Waters wastewater treatment plant. You serve about 30,000 people and businesses here in San Carlos. Over 90% of your accounts are residential, so it's largely a residential customer base. You also serve four county sewer maintenance districts. It's a much smaller part of your revenue stream, but you convey their water to Silicon Valley Clean Water under separate contracts with each. Stephen mentioned, you've got a lot of old pipelines out there. You've got about 105 miles of pipelines, a lot of them approaching the end of their useful life, and the city's been making good progress addressing some of those capital needs, but you have a lot to go. Over at the Regional Treatment Plant, they are unfortunately looking at about an $850 million capital improvement program to rebuild their influent force main and their treatment plant. They're about a third of the way through it, but San Carlos is going to have to fund and continue funding its share of those projects. Regarding sewer enterprise finances, the way your sewer utilities accounted for, it's a self-supporting enterprise fund, there's no general fund subsidy to fund the operations. Really, what you rely on mostly is the sewer service charges that you collect from your customer base, and those are mostly collected on San Mateo County property tax rolls. You've been facing a lot of challenges, I mentioned, with Silicon Valley Clean Water, number one, and with your own sewer capital needs, number two. When I look at what this city has done in recent years, I mean, I give it very high marks. The city really stepped to the plate and adopted some substantial rate increases back in July 2013, or 14, 15, 16, to mainly get yourself in shape for Silicon Valley Clean Waters' major capital funding program and your own funding needs. So you kind of did the heavy lifting with your rates back then, and since then, it's been kind of small gradual rate increases over the last few years. But those rate increases really put your sewer enterprise in a much stronger financial position than it was, and put it in a position where you can continue to address your needs with kind of smaller gradual rate increases. The only thing I wanted to mention here is, you also temporarily benefited from, you did your rate increase based on Silicon Valley Clean Waters' projected funding needs. Well, they in turn were delayed a little bit in moving along with their capital program. That wasn't a bad thing, that turned out to be a good thing, since it's enabled you to build up some fund reserves that you've been able to use to apply to projects and put your agency on stronger footing, where you're now in line with a lot of double, other double-A rated agencies out there, which is important because there's a lot more financing to go. And next slide, kind of already alluded to this, the major financial challenges you're facing are threefold. The biggest one is the rebuilding of the Regional Treatment Plant and Influent Force Main. This has been going on since about 2008, 2009. The total program, 850 million, that translates to a share of San Carlos equal to about 130 million, a little bit less than that. But these are just estimates because all the projects haven't been designed and bid out, so the numbers could continue to change a little bit in the future, and unfortunately, we've seen in the past, the numbers have tended to escalate. But hopefully, that's, they have enough contingency built in. The way that impacts you is, a lot of these projects are going to have to be financed with a long-term debt. Silicon Valley Clean Water's been going after low-cost financing to the maximum extent it can. It has received from some subsidized loans from the State Revolving Fund Loan Program, which offer interest rates that are half of the state's bond rate. And unfortunately, those funds are now hard to get because there's many, many agencies going after a limited pool, but I know Silicon Valley Clean Water is continually to, to go after those funds. But the big news is, there's a new funding program that just started last year, WIFIA, the Water Infrastructure and Financing Act, something along those lines, by the federal EPA, and Silicon Valley Clean Water was one of, you know, roughly 20 agencies around the country that received the initial invitations to apply, so they're in that stage now. And if they get that, that could mean, you know, up to roughly a couple hundred million dollars of subsidized financing. Right now, the rates would be a little bit below 3%. So that's, that's where it hits San Carlos, is you've got to pay your share of debt service. And what we're seeing with Silicon Valley Clean Water, the debt service that you're currently paying for your share of costs is about 3.5 million a year, but that's going to ramp up to a little less than 7 million over the next eight years. So that's a bit of a hill to climb, and that's the biggest financial challenge that you're facing. Number two, we talked about your aging sewer pipelines. It's great you've got over your consent decree, and you've just started addressing some of your grade-five deficiencies in a few basins, but you still have 14 basins to go, and the process is going to require continual reassessment that's likely going to result in additional projects being identified in future years. So unfortunately, you've done a good job of ramping up funding for that program, but construction cost inflation has kind of eaten away at the spending power of the dollars that you're currently applying towards your own capital program. You're currently, I think this year, slated to spend, you know, 5-point-something million, maybe it's like 5.5 million or so, I apologize if my numbers are off a tiny bit, but from talking with your public works staff, they've really identified the need for $6 million a year would be a comfortable number for them, an achievable number, where they can stay out in front of these capital funding needs for your own sewer system. And the third thing that faces all agencies is operating cost inflation, which tends to be higher than CPI for water and wastewater agencies, which are very staff and capital intensive. So if you think you need at least a few percent rate increase just to kind of spin your wheels where you're at. Before talking about the proposed rate increases, I just wanted to show a survey of a lot of regional agencies here on the peninsula, so you can see where your rates compare for a typical single-family home against a lot of other agencies. Right now, you're a little bit higher than the middle of the pack, you're actually below the average but above the median. You're a little bit higher than Belmont and West Bay Sanitary District are two of the other tributary agencies to Silicon Valley Clean Water. And just, you know, there's, from my perspective, it doesn't matter where agencies wind up in this, an agency on the far right of the chart could be the most efficient operating agency out there, they're just facing a different reality. But when we look at this and see what's going on with San Carlos compared to some of your surrounding agencies, you are funding a little bit higher level of capital funding for your own system on a per capita basis than some other agencies out there, which is a good thing, because I'll tell you, every agency on this survey is facing old pipelines and kind of a tidal wave of funding requirements for replacing those facilities over time. So you're in a good spot. What we did as part of our rate study was twofold. One is developing long-term financial projections to identify your future funding needs, look long-term, and aim your rates in the right direction. So that's based on all the latest assumptions, all the latest information we have from the city, your latest budget. We try to err slightly on the conservative side with our projections. We've incorporated Silicon Valley Clean Water annually provides a long-range financial plan that identifies their future financing needs, so that's built in. And we also built in 6 million per year for city capital improvements for addressing the collection system capital needs. And we escalate that by 3% per year to kind of keep the spending power in line where the city has identified it should be. And we did that, and we've identified, based on a steady gradual approach of rate increases, that the city would need to move forward with 4.5% rate increases each year, looking out over the next decade. Now, we're not recommending you adopt 10 years of rate increases, the city's traditionally done three years at a time in its last couple of rate increases, so we'd recommend you take the first three steps along the path, and then come back and reevaluate and adjust courses needed. The other thing I want to point out is that although it would be overall 4.5% rate increases, that the impacts will actually be a little different for each customer class, because we're also recommending a rate realignment. In California, rates are supposed to reasonably reflect the cost of providing service. So back in 2013, we had done kind of a rate structure derivation from the grounds up to make sure you're complying with state law, Prop 218 is what it's commonly referred to. So we're recommending a new, you know, rate structure realignment, so you could have the administrative records supporting the fairness of your rates. This slide here shows kind of graphically the financial projections over the next 10 years. Your expenses are shown in the, kind of the different color sections at the bottom, and there's a red line on there that shows projected revenues with a 4.5% rate increases. Just a couple of quick things I want to point out in this chart. The blue sections in the bottom show the city's expenses, the dark blue being your operating expenses, and the light blue being the capital expenses. And your operating expenses rise by roughly 3.5% to 4% a year, depending on what type of expense it is. Your capital expense is going up at 3% a year, again, to maintain the buying power of the, of the capital funding. The green section shows Silicon Valley Clean Water's funding share that the city has to pay. And the big change I want to point out is there's the, that light, the light green section, not the hot top section, but the, the second light green section in the middle, you can see out in year 26, 27, there's a big bump up from 4.8 million to 6.9 million. And what that is, that's when the projected WIFIA financing debt service would start to come online. So that, that program allows you to delay the debt repayment for a few years until after the project is complete, so you can see that, you know, the debt service that you're funding for Silicon Valley Clean Water doesn't steadily step over time. It increases, but there's a big bump up in the outer years, and it may end up being a little sooner, a little later, depending on how the final details work out. In terms of your sewer rate structure, we've assisted the city with rates in the last couple of rate studies. In part of those rate studies, we did evaluate various modifications to the city's sewer rate structure. Your sewer rate structure is pretty sound to begin with, but that doesn't mean there, there doesn't have to be modifications. And one of the main things we looked at in, back in, I think, 2014, 2015, was evaluating And one of the main things we looked at in, back in, I think, 2014, 2015, was evaluating the residential rate structure. Historically, residential customers paid a fixed annual rate for sewer service and all residential dwelling units paid the same rate regardless of whether it was a multifamily unit or a single-family unit. So we looked at some options, including, you know, reduced rates for multifamily dwelling units. We looked at potential volumetric rate component for residential or just keeping it the way it is. And based on input we received at the time, the city opted to move forward with reduced rates for multifamily customers. That charge, I know I have something on this slide I misplaced in the wrong section, but your multifamily rate is now about 86% of your single-family rate. Your commercial customers pay volumetric rates based on customer class. The customer class is that if higher wastewater strength, which costs more to treat, pay higher rates. The commercial rates are subject to a minimum charge to make sure that all customers are paying in towards the fixed costs of the system. And I'll point out for sewer, really almost all the costs are fixed costs, whether it's staffing or whether it's capital needs. It's mostly fixed costs. There's really a very small amount of costs that vary based on changes in wastewater flow, electricity and chemicals, but they work out to probably be about 5% of the system cost, which is why most agencies have fixed sewer rates. But getting back, your commercial rates, they are subject to a minimum. The minimum used to be 100% of the single-family rate to make sure each dwelling unit was, each commercial customer is paying the same charge as single-family. But in one of our prior rate studies, we looked at the flows coming in, we looked at the options, and there was a recommendation that the city adopted to reduce the minimum commercial rate to 75% of the single-family rate. Your sewer charges, as I mentioned, they're recovered on the property tax rolls, so it's not like you're sending out monthly bills to everyone here in the city. And the other thing I finally wanted to mention about your sewer rates was there is a low-income discount program out there that was adopted in 2016. It's a 10% discount. So some customers have taken advantage of that, but from talking to staff, it sounds like others who are eligible may not have taken advantage. So there's still more possibility of additional customers to take advantage of that. So we're contemplating putting notice of that in the rate increase notice that goes out to the rate payers to remind them that the program exists. This slide shows kind of the details of what the proposed rates are for the next three years with the four and a half percent rate increases each year. Again, the first year, there's some minor tweaks to the rate structure that might have a little different impacts for most customers. I mean, very small differences from four and a half percent. The main difference is the underlying costs for biological oxygen demand and suspended solids. Those are underlying unit costs for wastewater strength. Those costs go up a little over 15% the first year. What has happened here in the city is with many other wastewater agencies around California is the flows have come down, but the wastewater concentrate, the level of stuff in the wastewater has stayed the same, so the concentrations have increased. So the wastewater strength is now a bigger component of the waste. And we're seeing with some other agencies, the cost per unit when you, has increased a little bit for the wastewater strength measurements. The low-income discount program I just referred to, this applies to single-family homes who are the payers of your sewer bills because you collect on the property tax rolls. So it's hard to make a program like this apply to multifamily dwelling units because the multifamily customers aren't the ones paying their rates. However, we wanted to remind the city that the city did adopt the reduced rates for multifamily customers a few years ago. So they're now paying rates that are 86% of the single-family rate. And the other thing is, you may not know, under Prop 218, one customer's rates cannot subsidize another customer's rates. So the funding for that program comes directly from the generosity of the city's general fund. There's not a lot of agencies in California that use general fund to help low-income discount, but you are one of the cities that does. That's nice for your customers to hear. To conclude, you're facing manageable financial challenges. I think the steps this council has taken in the past with the rates have put you on a much stronger financial footing. So it's really small gradual increases that we're looking toward in the upcoming years. We're recommending three years of rate increases at this time and then a reevaluation after that. And in terms of process going forward, again, the point of this meeting is to get initial input, answer questions. We're going to be coming back, I think it's planned in a couple of weeks, to a city council meeting with the proposed rate recommendations. And we'll be looking for your direction to move forward with the official Prop 218 process to adopt those rates. And what that entails is mailing notice to all of the property owners and customers, waiting at least 45 days, and then you hold a public hearing. So it would be at that public hearing where you would take official action to adopt rates. You can always adopt rates that are less than included on the property, Prop 218 notice, but you can never exceed what's noticed. And the city council, last time we went through the process, we had recommended three 5% rate increases were noticed to the customers. And the city said, hey, we're going to do a 0% rate increase. We just came off a few years of a large rate increase, a 0% rate increase for year one, followed by two 5%. So they did reduce what had been proposed. We don't necessarily recommend doing that, but I'm just mentioning it so you're aware it's an option. So that kind of concludes what we wanted to cover. I'd like to turn it over to questions and any discussion the council may have.
Thank you, Alex. Sarah?
Thank you. That was a great presentation. I'm not really sure if my questions are for you or for Stephen. Might be both of you. You mentioned we have a reserve fund right now, and I'm wondering what that fund amounts to at the moment.
Yeah, I believe, I'll give you the exact numbers. As of the beginning of this fiscal year, you had a little under $17 million in that Your annual expenses this year are over 19 million, so it's a little less than one year of expenses, but your expenses are rising. The level of reserves is kind of commensurate with other double-A rated agencies. If at some point in time you, here's a question, maybe you're going here. Can you, instead of raising rates, can you draw down fund reserves? I get asked that all the time. And the answer is yes and no. Yes, in the short term, you can use fund reserves to offset a rate increase. But once you go out a few years and you've drawn down those fund reserves, your cash flow funding needs are the same as they would have been had you not drawn down those fund reserves. So instead of steady gradual rate increases, what we've seen some agencies do is try to get by with zero rate increases for a few years, but then they're invariably faced with a catch-up. And that's where sometimes it gets problematic because the catch-up might not be 15% catch-up. There may be other unanticipated things and they end up creating a larger catch-up that's sometimes not popular. So generally, we recommend the slow, steady approach. And I'll tell you, there's so many financing needs out there, not only with your own system, but particularly with Silicon Valley Clean Water, that if you did want it at some point to apply some of your fund reserves to the funding needs of Silicon Valley Clean Water to reduce the amount you needed to borrow in debt, you could do that. Redwood City did that a few years ago. They had accrued some excess fund reserves and they reduced their Silicon Valley Clean Water funding needs by about 10 million. And the nice thing about that was in reducing those financing needs, they kept their debt service a little bit lower than it otherwise would have been to help keep the rates a little bit lower over the long term. So sorry for giving you more than you want, but these are the common things people ask me.
One more question. So we have 105 miles of pipeline sewer lines. What percentage of that has been fixed so far and updated?
I don't have the, all the exact numbers, but you know, I would say it's probably closer to like 15, 15 to 20%. So I mean, it's a, it's a matter of kind of going through the process. As I mentioned, we do do that CCTV or closed caption TV to make that assessment. Unfortunately, you really don't know how bad a pipe is until you actually see it. And so we are in the process of going through all our zones, if you will, to really look at and how to improve that. But you know, the, I had mentioned earlier, the grade five categories or defects, you know, those are the ones that are basically failed. So those are the ones that we're really trying to focus on. But right behind it, you have your grade four defects, which maybe aren't as bad as fives, but they probably do need to be addressed. So you know, my instruction is, you know, if we see fours and fives together, let's get them all done all at once.
Thank you.
Laura?
Thank you for providing the background and the history on this as well as the analysis. I'm just wanting to try to see if we can, is there a way to kind of articulate where we are in just an executive summary? So I think what I'm getting is that our share of this upgrade project that's undergoing, that's ongoing right now is 129 million. And we're falling $6 million a year short. Am I, I'm not, I'm just not understanding kind of how the numbers are mapping out. So could you just break it down? I guess maybe an executive summary of kind of.
Good question. I apologize if I didn't explain it as well as I could here. You kind of have two funding needs. One is for Silicon Valley Clean Water, the regional wastewater treatment provider. They've got a nine-mile Influent Force Main and a wastewater treatment plant that's just at the end of its useful life and needs to be rebuilt and upgraded to meet regulatory standards. So they're in the midst of this 850 million capital improvement program. San Carlos's share is about 130 million. And what that means to you is you're going to have to finance your share of that 130 million of capital needs. You already have some of that built into your rates because you're already spending about three and a half million per year for your share of Silicon Valley Clean Water capital improvement costs. But that amount's projected to ramp up to a little less than 7 million per year over the next eight years. So you have like a $3.5 million funding gap for Silicon Valley Clean Water's share of projects. And you can address that with, you know, gradual rate increases over a number of years. On the other side of the coin, you have your own city collection system capital needs that Stephen's familiar dealing with. You have been addressing those. You've got the consent decree lifted with a lot of the improvements you've made. You started addressing these grade five improvements. When I looked at your capital program, it was like, you know, somewhere between five, five and a half million per year on average going forward. But from talking with staff, they didn't feel it was enough to really stay on top of this. So they were recommending bumping it up to 6 million a year from, you know, that's not a big bump up from where it currently is. So that's kind of a small part of the increase, but just to get the funding level back where it's accomplishing enough capital improvements that the city wants to accomplish. Because pipeline replacements, the costs have increased from where they were four or five years ago pretty substantially. This is facing all the communities up and down the peninsula where something that might have cost, you know, $100, you know, five years ago now is costing 125, $130 to do the same thing. So your spending power is diminished. So there's a recommendation for a slight increase to get you back on track. And then with annual 3% cost inflation, to keep that funding level on track, to keep accomplishing the same level of projects.
Thank you. That helps.
I don't know if that's an executive summary, but yeah.
Adam?
Yeah, and I've got four questions. Should I do them all at once or is that?
I have more than that.
All right. Well, I can make more up if you want me to, Mark, if we can, you know. First two might be pretty quick and then the other ones might take a little more time. So one, I just had a question on the, on the multifamily house sort of rates. Is that rate per unit or is that rate per building?
It's a rate per dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you. That's why I was wondering what the discount was, but that makes sense on that, that it's. And so, and then the second question sort of tagging on to that is both on the commercial side and the residential side, we're facing and see lots of growth happening in San Carlos, both on, on both aspects of that. So was that taken into account when you look at this rate increase proposal?
Yes, but I'll say to a conservative degree. One thing I didn't mention here is that the city did review and update its capacity charges levied on new development just a few, the last few years. So you're making sure the growth is paying its own way, number one. But yeah, you do have growth coming in. So that where that's, that helps you on two fronts. One is you do get connection fees from growth when they connect and you also get, you know, increase in customer base. We did include some growth, not a ton of growth, because what's happening is there were some big projects that, you've already gotten a lot of revenues from growth with these connection fees in recent years, which is great. But going forward, you do, my understanding is there is a big project. And from talking with staff and Public Works and Finance, there was a major project, the redevelopment, that is now not moving forward as they had originally projected a few years ago. So that's delayed. So we don't have all that, we're not making the rosy assumption that all this growth is coming online. So what we typically like to do in our financial projections with growth is assume kind of a lower growth scenario based on what the city's seeing. And if growth ends up exceeding that, you know, you reevaluate your finances in a few years and it might mean you're in a little better shape. And maybe instead of four and a half percent rate increases, maybe you only need 4% rate increases going. But that's in context of many moving parts. Growth, you know, Silicon Valley Clean Water, I mentioned, they haven't bid out all these future projects. So their costs may change, financing costs may change. So that's in context of many moving different parts. So yes, growth to some degree, but we didn't assume a high level of growth.
Adam, may I interrupt just to tag on to that? And Alex, this probably isn't a you question, this is for staff. What you just said, no offense, doesn't make any sense to me in the context of what I've also heard of, Jeff, you probably know where I'm going with this. We're looking at potentially, you know, two and a half million square feet of office space being approved and built sometime in the next few years, assuming the economy actually can, you know, doesn't fall apart. That just seems, you know, given that there's 1.4 million square feet of commercial space currently in town, that's a huge increase. And, and so I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what you said in the context of that. So Stephen, I'm talking about L3, Kelly Moore, the other, Meridian 25, those are all gigantic projects by San Carlos standards.
So just to make sure I understand your question. So you're asking for the larger projects in the kind of that industrial area, you know, how do we account for the project?
Let me be very specific. What I thought I heard Alex say was that in response to the question that Adam had asked about growth, is that we sort of, from our last set of projections, we sort of toned down the expectations for growth. And that's when my ears went up and I'm like, I don't see how that could possibly be consistent with what I'm hearing from other people, you know, about these gigantic projects. So explain what I'm missing. I'm happy to be educated. I'm just, that's what I'm trying to map from one point to the other.
So, you know, basically, I think what Alex was trying to say is, you know, certainly we kind of work with our planning department, kind of, kind of make our best guess as far as when those projects are going to come in and then we kind of roll that into our rate model. However, we do know that, you know, some of the projects haven't come in as, as we had, quickly as we, as we had thought. And so I think what Alex was trying to say is although we do know that the projects are coming in and certainly it's, it's going to have a big impact, it's, it's not coming in as quickly as we originally had planned.
Jeff, looks like you all are trying to.
Yeah, I was just going to add to that a little bit. In, in the case of some of the development, we know the L3 site comes to mind as an example. The property owner and developer have informed us that they actually have a plan to develop the site over perhaps a 10-year period of time in phases. So while you may actually be approving a project, it may get entitled in the next three years, construction of these, of the two and a half million square feet may actually be over the next decade. And so I think that's, you know, when we're looking at three years here in terms of reality of what's coming in, so they're just trying to be conservative. At the end of the day, it's all going to come out in the wash. If they get built, they're going to pay their connection fees and they're going to pay their sewer rates and that's going to factor into the rate structure, certainly at that time.
All right. Well, I'll tell you what, because I'm interrupting Adam's questions, let me just say that personally, when this comes back for us to move forward, I would really like to hear you and Al and what have coordinated this and everybody agrees on what the schedule is and we're not being overly conservative or overly unrealistic. Just, I want to make sure it's consistent all the way across the board because it's, it's easy to justify building up big reserves because we know we're going to need the money eventually anyway. But I'd rather not do that to the rate payers if I don't need to. Thank you, Adam.
Hey, you're the chair. You got prerogative for that. I'll give it to you. And just, and I would just add to Ter Olbert's comments on just on the residential side as well, given we've got a number of big residential projects coming online that are, will be happening in the next couple of years, how that was incorporated into the thought process around that. And then second, I want to ask about, and the number four, I guess it's on one of the slides, for the projected growth cost for. slides, for the projected growth cost for San Carlos, for our infrastructure piece, for the capital improvements. I know Stephen mentioned it's sort of 15% to 20% done on things. So does, but yet you're sort of projecting out over a number of years, kind of continued growth on that. You mentioned earlier sort of a 50 to 100, 50 years sort of cycle. So for repairing everything within the next five to seven years, why is that capital rate cost going up? What, if we're doing the big projects and getting that all done, why is that cost still going up?
Why you're continuing that 6 million adjusted?
Why that keeps that rate looking, because you're looking at here 5.96 to 7.6 or so, even though we may be done with a lot of the projects? For the San Carlos side. I understand the other side in Silicon Valley is a longer.
That's right. For your own collection system, I defer to Stephen. My understanding is that this isn't just a one time, you get a few projects done, that you've got, you know, tens of millions of dollars of these current grade five deficiencies identified, not even including grade four, and it's going to be continued reevaluation, rebuilding. So it's going to be a while before you really work through all the needs of the system. And just imagine 10 years out, all of what's, you know, currently 60 years old is now going to be 70 years old, et cetera. So it's going to be an ongoing process, I think, of pipeline replacements. Does it ever stop? Maybe at some point down the line it diminishes, but I think that's going to go on for more than 10 years, but I will defer.
That is exactly correct. Basically, you know, as we kind of complete kind of the grade five defects, as we, you know, over time, as I mentioned earlier, we look at CCTV. Well, if you could do it like every, every year, a fifth of your system every year, well that means the other four fifths, you're not seeing that particular year. But over the course of time, whether it's, you just start, start having failures basically because of, let's say earthquakes occur or suicides or something happens to the pipe, you don't know that's happening until you actually CCTV it or if you know you have like an account for SSLs or Santeria sewer overflows. So as you make these repair category, or excuse me, grade five defects, you work through grade four defects, those grade two defects, grade three defects that we haven't really touched, over time, over a five-year period, they can actually start turning into category fours, categories, you know, fives, depending on the situation and, you know, what had occurred during that time you last inspected it to now. So there's always a certain amount of replacement that you have to do with your pipes just because it's age. And as I mentioned earlier, because our system is 50 to 100 years old, those pipes, they tend to fail, if you will, sooner. And then, you know, as you bring in or you repair or you replace your newer pipes, you know, they'll have a longer life, but eventually those will fail as well.
I just had one thing to put in context. You've got over 100 miles of lines and it kind of a conservative low estimate of what it costs to replace per foot, you know, $400 per foot sewer line. To replace your current sewer system would be 250 to 300 million dollars. It may even be higher than that in current dollars. So if it's 300 million divided by 50 years, it's about 6 million a year. So you, you kind of are on a long-term schedule at this level of funding. Now, it doesn't mean it might not tail off at some point, but I don't know when that's going to be, maybe a while.
I just had one last, last question on this. Thank you, thank you for the answer. It's helpful because it puts it more in context of the sort of gradation of, or degradation of the pipes and how we're looking at it. I guess the, I don't know if you have this data or if we can come back for this data at some point, is I understand you're recommending sort of a four and a half percent increase and it looks like though in the out years, we could be looking at potentially some more substantial increase as some of those WFIya funds come on board or other things. So I'm just wondering, like, are we setting ourselves up for '26, '27, '28 to come back to the rate payers say, we need 10% now? And is it better to say, maybe go a little bit higher now so that we have a better sort of gradual rise?
Oh, no, good question. And I just want to go back a few slides of that, that chart, which was here. And I don't know what I'm doing here evidently. Okay. Can we go back to that chart that shows the, the expenses? There was like the colorful chart that showed that bar graph of expenses.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
Slide 11.
The next one. That's it. Oh, yeah. Oh, slide 11? I'm not doing anything, Al. At least I'm not trying to do, do anything. There, yeah, that one. Yes, the Silicon Valley Clean Water. Well, and the answer is no, we're not setting anyone up for a larger rate increase down the line. Now, this is something that the city looked for, looked at in the past, like a big funding needs and they kind of did an initial rate increase to get back on track and it's been kind of hopefully steady gradual since. But we're assuming is 4% gradual rate increases each year for the next 10 years. So there's no bump up. It's kind of a slow, steady pace to get from here to the end line. Underneath that, the expenses aren't exactly increasing at four and a half percent a year. Sometimes they're going up more, sometimes you're a little bit less, but it was, yeah, you're right, in one of those outer years where there is a big bump up in the, the debt service funding needs for WFIya program for, for Silicon Valley Clean Water, if everything goes as they're, they're currently scheduled to go and based on all the assumptions they're putting into that. So, so their expenses might bump up a bit in the outer year, but the goal was not to, you know, have your rates go up four and a half percent for a few years and then a little bit less and spike at, you know, 10% that year. We're kind of looking long-term and saying, hey, we're only taking action for the first three years, but we're looking long-term at what that, that gradual path may be and we'll come back again in three years and update the numbers with whatever the reality is on the ground and again, look long-term and kind of set course in the right direction and then, you know, keep coming back every few years and adjusting course as needed. But yeah, the plan is not to, to set you up for a, a rate spike in one of the outer years, but to kind of take small, steady steps. You know, you can see the top of the mountain and try to take steady steps towards that and adjust as needed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So as you're talking, it's making me, what I'm thinking about is that there's a certain strategy that has been laid out in terms of trying to address this and it sounds like the first step is to tackle grade five defects, which are, sounds like they're very expensive and that type of thing. Have alternative strategies been reviewed that could potentially bring the overall cost of this down? Because what I'm hearing is it sounds like we're never going to get out of this or never is a strong word, but it's a long road to getting our sewer system back to vitality, I guess. And then that idea of maybe, you know, while you're in there, do you look at if there's a grade one to four defect and if so, do you fix it? Like, help me understand how, you know, what measures are being taken to make sure that the overall cost of this is as low as it possibly can be? I guess is what I'm getting at. Thank you.
Sure. So that's a very good question and certainly, you know, what we try to do, obviously, as I mentioned earlier, we can't always make a determination of condition of the pipe until we actually see it. In some cases, you know, even though we might televise it or have that TV, we still don't know because we can actually go in, but once we uncover it, that's when we actually make that determination. You actually get to see with your, your eyes and you would see it. So to answer your question, in case, if in fact we are going to, if it makes sense, so say for instance, that we were originally planning to do a spot repair, let's say it's going to be an eight-foot section, you're doing a spot repair. Anything around that eight-foot section, you know, we want to correct. So basically there's a lateral connection that, you know, doesn't look quite right, that's what we want to do. We want to try to repair that. However, there has been situations where we actually uncover the pipe and then we realize something doesn't look quite right. So, you know, what was originally a spot repair now becomes a much larger repair, mainly it's a pipe repair, pipe repair replacement or pipe replacement rather than a repair itself, such that, you know, we replace the pipe, but we also replace the laterals. So, you know, the kind of the rule of thumb, what we like to do is you really don't want to touch that pipe twice. So once we're in there and we have a open trench or we're digging, digging in the soil, we want to actually replace it, get that pipe replaced or repaired as best we can and then cover it back up so that we don't have to come back, you know, again, at some time in the future or in the near future. We might have to come back, you know, 50 years later, but at least, you know, we'll have that section probably in pretty good shape.
All right. I had a number of questions and they're going to sort of jump all over the map a little bit, just because I, they were sort of sparked by individual slides. So Steve, when you were talking about the importance of sewer maintenance and you mentioned the fat oil and grease program, that jogged a memory for me, which I don't know if my colleagues know, but at least at one point, we do regular monthly maintenance downtown, cleaning out one of the main lines on either Laurel or San Carlos Avenue. Do we still do that?
We still do that. And, you know, mainly for the, that same reason is we don't really want to have the grease buildup in our lines because what happens is obviously you could imagine, it clogs up the line and then your neighbors or the surrounding area actually experiencing backups.
So that's still a, a current issue. You know, we've talked in other contexts on the dais about how with the evolution of what's going on with retail storefronts, we're likely to see more restaurants sort of per square foot or per linear foot or whatever we want to call it, which my sense is every time you put a restaurant in, you probably increase the risk of having a fog problem because that's mostly where the fog is coming from, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Is there room for us to be more aggressive with, in our enforcement with the individual restaurants? Those, I almost feel like we have a little odd situation here where, where, I'm not trying to pick on any one restaurateur, but we have people who, who collectively can cause a problem for the community, which we are currently spending maintenance dollars on, okay? If they put less stuff into the lines, that's particularly aggravating for the lines, then we would probably be able to reduce our maintenance costs. So part of that almost sounds like an enforcement thing to me as opposed to a maintenance thing. So where do we stand on, on that balance? I mean, are there things we could do that would be more aggressive in terms of trying to make sure the inputs into the sewer system are less unacceptable?
Well, certainly, you know, we do have an inspection program where, you know, we kind of work with Silicon Valley Clean Water. They actually act, you know, do the inspections of many of the, our restaurants or any high generator, if you will. And, and we do have the legal authority to actually cite or actually, and maybe I should turn this over, ask Greg for confirmation, but, you know, in, in other districts that I have run, basically there is legal authority because the only thing that you're really allowed to put into a Santeria sewer is kind of a waste. That doesn't include fog and usually in our municipal, there's specific sections about, you know, dealing with fog and grease oils that it should not go into, in the sewers. I think mainly because it does cause such havoc within the operation of the, of the sewer system itself. As I mentioned earlier in some of the, kind of the slides that I presented, you know, we, we had to actually kind of up our fog or fats, oil and grease program mainly because we were starting to see a lot of buildup in our lines such that it was causing problems elsewhere, you know, downstream of kind of the areas.
Greg, did you all a try?
I just wanted to underline that the history of our inspection program, it came out of the, the San Francisco Bay Keepers Consent Decree. So we really beefed up our enforcement and our requirements for the, for grease traps and other mitigation. And the inspection program is something that it was included in the changes to our code as part of the consent decree and it's something we're continuing to do. So it's all intended to reduce that. It doesn't totally eliminate it and that's the part where the code enforcement, I think, comes in through the inspection program. But I think it's intended to prevent sanitary sewer overflows from the grease that we have in our restaurants downtown.
Jeff, did you want to?
I was just going to add some, you know, from a practical standpoint, our risk management data has suggested that the program has been working as we've seen a really significant reduction of backflows in the downtown area. And once upon a time, I can remember, you know, we, we had a sewer backflow into a building near El Camino and San Carlos Avenue and our crews responded and it was a very expensive sewer backup for us in repairing the building. And it had been hit before, it was the second or third time. Our crews were out there, cleared the lines and it was a big grease plug and the very next day, we had another grease plug backup into the same building. You know, we haven't seen that now in, in seven or eight years, that, that type of occurrence where it was quite frequent before this program was put in place.
With that kind of as context, Steve, you've worked in a bunch of different areas in this. How does, what's your sense of how our program compares to what best practices are?
From what I can tell, you know, certainly whenever you could come off a consent decree, that's always the wonderful thing. I've had, had another district where actually we were in a, you know, consent decree, actually I had left the organization before we came under. But, you know, certainly it, it does take a lot of effort and a lot of manpower, resources to, to kind of come out from under that. And so the city has done a very good job. And just in reference to what Jeff has indicated, we actually have a reporting system that we have to report back to the water board with any type of SSOs that we might have. And I just happened to look at it, you know, over the course of time and actually we're doing quite well. Basically, the category one, which is like the worst overflows, we're averaging per hundred, per hundred services, we're, or 100 miles of pipe, we're averaging like less than one, whereas the state averages in the 16. So, so we're doing quite well for all the effort that we're doing.
Okay, good, good to hear. Given that though, then why do we need to keep doing the maintenance on a regular basis if, if everything's working so well?
Well, I, I think we kind of got in a situation where because our pipes were really old and we were, really weren't performing the maintenance as perhaps we should have and that kind of caught up with us such that we probably really weren't repairing the pipes or laterals as, as quickly as we should. Some of the pipes are, you know, probably undersized than what they, they need to be. And so we have made, you know, good efforts to actually reduce the number of SSOs. I would hate to see that we kind of relax or perhaps reduce some of the effort that we've kind of are planning to do such that we kind of revert back to where we had been.
I guess I'm, I think I was asking a slightly different question. In the narrow, narrow focus of just the downtown area where I was talking about that maintenance, are there things that we could reasonably do to change even further the behavior of some of the restaurants that would eliminate the need for doing that kind of regular maintenance?
Well, besides kind of the grease traps or grease interceptors that, you know, most restaurants would normally have, I think just in general, you, you always like to do a little bit of self-cleaning. I think because of grease traps and grease interceptors, if they're not, if those devices aren't really actually maintained, they can release a certain amount of grease down into the main itself. Those devices, the grease traps and grease interceptors are not really something that the city maintains as part of the property owner or the restaurant who would normally maintain those. I have seen the situations where grease traps, although they're there, they're not really operating properly and such that probably more grease is going down, you know, the sewer than, than what you would like to see and therefore it does cause that.
Well, I, I'll thank you. I'll, we'll, I'll return to this when we give staff direction. The, the estimates that we have for our own system, having to spend about $6 million a year, which I think is the current, you know, baked into the current numbers, how does that compare to what our earlier model was for what we thought we had to spend per year? Because the earlier model was built on the same notion is that we have to spend a certain amount of money per year in order to keep things whole. And I, I think Alex, you mentioned this number is different and I'm just trying to get a feel for how different it is.
It's a little different. I mean, if you were to go back to the prior rate studies of, you know, six years ago, three years ago, I think what was included in the numbers was 5 million per year escalating again at 3% per year. So.
So five versus six.
It's a little bit less. Yeah, five and change and now it's being recommended six for a kind of similar buying power.
That's fine. My, my next thing is the last of a question, then perhaps an observation, there's a reference in the presentation for, for our city infrastructure needs, a 3% annual cost escalation factor that frankly seems in the current construction environment, a little bit.
Low?
Low.
Yeah.
Yes. I was trying to think of another word, but low, so.
Yeah, but I think what we're basing that on is hearing from like public works staff saying, you know, 6 million would be an appropriate number to target. And so the construction costs have already gone up over the last four or five years significantly. Going forward, it's, it, you know, it's hard in the projections to say, okay, let's assume they keep going up at, you know, 8% a year or whatever it would be. So we escalated at 3% a year. You know? at 3% a year. You know, I mean, they've already, they've already increased. So now we're kind of starting from a new baseline and increasing at an inflationary rate. You were correct. It's a little bit of a guessing game and
You know, that's like the old saying about the market just went up 25%, is on his way up for another 20% or about to go down 20. I mean, who knows? But, but I guess my feedback that I would, I would give staff is personally from every, all the conversations, you know, Steve, you and I have had on many different construction-related projects or things that we've seen, that number seems a little low, at least in this three-year timeframe. So I just ask you to be, you know, cognizant of that. If you need to adjust stuff, then make the argument for adjusting it. The, on this slide, which I'm glad is still up there since we were having some difficulty getting, getting it back there. And Steve, this is sort of a, this is that question I talked to you about before the meeting started. Baked into the blue region here is some plan or notion of how we're going after in a priority sequence of some kind, the repairs that we need to make and the maintenance work that we need to do on our system. What I'm trying to get a handle on is, you know, this is a nice, smooth growing curve. What does that say in terms of how, what's sort of the embedded risk? And let me try and clarify that for you a little bit. It's possible to come up with a smooth curve and you, the person presenting it, might sit there and go, yes, and until we get out to year eight, I'm going to be really nervous because we haven't actually smoothly grown to the point where we need to go to deal with the risks that could be potentially really bad. Or it could be, you know, hey, this is smoothly growing, but everything's great today and this will just make it even greater tomorrow. That's what the dimension I'm trying to get a handle on is, is how much risk to the city of having something bad happen in a sewer sense is embedded in this thing. Meaning, should we accelerate it? Are we being so conservative that we could afford to decelerate it a little bit and we wouldn't notice the significant change? Can you help me out here with this?
If I understand, or perhaps maybe the best way I could put it is, you know, proposing rate structures are always very difficult because a lot of it is based on assumptions and forecasts. The city has made really good efforts as far as, you know, maintaining our system since 2009, where we tried to bring up, as I mentioned earlier, we had to put a lot of resources in. I'm very confident of what we're proposing. I think the city has done a very good job as far as, you know, raising the rates early on, you know, in, in kind of late 2000s, just to allow us to do the resources and make the repairs that we needed. I think as Alex had alluded to, in many instances, a lot of times, it's very difficult to raise rates in any case. And so, you know, they, maybe the hope is not to raise it or kind of keep it flat. But ultimately, what we would normally see is at some point, you're just going to be at that decision point where you're going to have to do perhaps double digits rate increase. And here, I believe the city has, you know, really kind of mapped out the future such that I think, although perhaps a little conservative, I think, you know, doing the approximately four and a half, 5% rate increase over the number of years actually accounts for a lot of the concerns that I would have because we are seeing this general rate increases over time such that, you know, we are making good efforts to maintain the system and really kind of address or plan it for the future. If that answers your question.
About as well as I could be expected. It's a fairly, it's a fairly difficult question to answer. I understand that. The other thing I was going to say to try and put it in different context is if it were solely up to me, which it is not, and I'm not saying I would necessarily do this, but if instead of your $6 million a year, if I told you it could only have five, would you be like, or would you be like, okay, I can live with that?
Well, obviously, I prefer to have the six. But, you know, if
Wouldn't have asked for it if you didn't, sure.
If the five is what is available, and I have been in situations where that's all we could, we would be allocated, certainly you have to kind of make it work and you try to justify or rebalance your project list, if you will.
Okay. Last question, at least for me, is we have here the proposal of doing a three-year trough of rate increases. I'd be interested in both of your reactions and Jeff's too, if you want to weigh in on if we went for two years instead of three.
Certainly, that's always an option. I have seen, you know, other agencies go through a two-year and it's perfectly fine. A lot of times, it provides council the opportunity to see how well our forecasts or assumptions are made. So without having to make significant changes. However, as Alec had previously indicated, you know, if the 218 is noticed at a max rate, that you can always go down. It's just that you can't go up to a higher level.
I understand. And it was actually mostly the thing you just cited, which is, lets us sort of see how things, things pan out and evolve, just because the future in this area is pretty imponderable, difficult to tell. Jeff, did you want to?
I would just add that since around the year 2007, we've seemed like we've had a lot of success with the three-year rate increases, which is why we've stuck with it. It seems like it's been the right amount of planning time for us in terms of executing projects and evaluating changes in the community and reevaluating our rate structures and then coming back to council for another evaluation. You know, the plan from a operating standpoint in terms of the maintenance plan, in terms of the capital improvement plan for our system, and in terms of the capital improvement plan for the plant seem to be pretty mature at this point. You know, I haven't seen a lot of changes in these plans, you know, like I said, since about 2005, which is really when we started to get into this issue. In 2007, I think one of the first three-year rate increases we did to put this in context was 30%, 20%, 10%. So if you went back in time and looked, you know, this wasn't a smooth curve. In fact, the curve was flat and it was actually going the other way. Rates were being lowered. Investment was really non-existent in the system for nearly 70 years. In addition to the fact that the original treatment plant was built mostly with federal money as part of the big Clean Water Act in the 1970s. And so you have a number of things happening. In addition to these projects, we're trying to build reserves for our system. The JPA that is running the treatment plant is trying to build reserves so that several generations from now, when they're rebuilding the plant again in the future, they'll at least have had some sunken investment in the replacement of the equipment and not just starting from scratch. So I know it's doubly painful for us living through it right now. We're paying for the sins of past generations and trying to do right by future generations. But I think we've gotten it to a point now where, you know, the curve does look good and achievable without, you know, the sort of heart attack moments that we were having a decade ago as we were looking at what we were being faced with and then operating under a legal consent decree.
I understand. I think from, you know, from our earlier discussions, I am personally less driven by the notion of trying to keep the numbers smooth because to me, it's more a function of what do we need to raise to do the work that we reasonably think we need to do. The, and by the way, I'm glad you mentioned about the reserves, just so everybody's aware of this. This is, and I can't be definitive about this because I'm still researching it. But the reserves Jeff was talking about, the Silicon Valley Clean Water is looking to build up and the reserves we're talking about building up. I suspect to some extent they're duplicative. And, and basically what's happened is you have a situation where the JPA saw really bad things happen because of the member agencies not being willing to give enough money in to allow the thing to be rebuilt. And they don't ever want that to happen again. And sort of like simultaneously, all the layers of the, where the funds flow through are trying to get religion and put aside money. And when you do that, you often end up bulking up reserves more than you would need to on a more integrated fashion. So in any event, any other questions from the dais? Crystal, I don't have any cards on this. Is there anybody who in the audience who wishes to address the council on this matter? Okay. So folks, we have to give direction to staff. We've obviously had a good discussion or asked a lot of questions. Who wants to chime in?
Sure, I'm happy to.
It's open mic night. Just step up and start singing.
I don't think you want to hear me sing, Mark. I guess for me, I mean, it sounds like, I mean, looking at the work that's done behind it, the rate increase seems reasonable. I'd almost be inclined to think about slightly higher to give ourselves a little more cushion in case some of these costs, I think Chair Olbert mentioned some of the business building costs and some of those other things that maybe are not, we're sort of maybe lowballing a little bit. So I'd rather not be stuck later on trying to have to go for a higher increase. I'd rather make sure we're more consistent over time.
Other feedback?
Yeah.
So Adam, I appreciate what you're saying. I also am concerned if we go too much higher, it'll be a little bit, you know, raising rates is never a fun thing to do. I see it's wholly important. From my view, it seems like there's a lot of thought that have gone, that's gone into this analysis. So I personally would be comfortable sticking with this approach. And then, you know, obviously we could readdress it later, but it doesn't, I'm not getting that there's going to be anything, I mean, major surprises that could throw us completely out of whack unless I'm missing something.
No, and I think the only other point I would make is given what sounds like with Prop 218, we can't ever, we can't go higher once we're locked in for that period. We can at least in the next couple of months, get a little more research on behind it. So if he said, let's say 5%, we could always go back to four and a half or four, depending what we thought was the right number. We just couldn't go up after.
Understood. Thank you.
Just to chime in here, and Greg can correct me if I get this wrong, but I thought the way 218 worked is you can't raise the rates more than what you've noticed. But if something happens and you have to re-notice, you're not bound for that like two-year period or three-year period. You can do it six months later, say, whoops, something happened. We ought to send another 218 notice out.
The issue is you need to re-initiate the 218 process, which is the public hearing, the mailed out notice, public hearing with the proposed change.
Sarah, did you?
I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the four and a half for now, but I wouldn't be opposed to noticing a five and then, you know, after further discussion, you know, coming back to it.
The, I actually, I sort of see both sides of this. The reason I'm sort of more comfortably about having made the comment about construction cost inflation seems to be higher than 3% is also some of the subsequent discussion I was having with Steve there, where I think there's, I think there's enough flexibility in the number and the four and a half percent that we'd be able to get by with four and a half percent and not even get by. I think, I think even given what's likely to happen to construction costs, we would be okay. So I would lean towards just accepting the four and a half percent per year proposal that staff has come forward with and just, just leave it at that. One thing, however, I do want to tee up again is, is I think there's some value to just doing this as a two-year thing, at least this go-around, and, and basically not doing the third year. I don't feel super strongly about that, but I want to put it out there because I think it, I think it makes a little more sense, given the imponderables and how things are evolving and what's likely to happen to the regional economy and whatnot. And it's also a way of dealing with if we sort of guess wrong on the four and a half versus 5%, we'll have it, it'd be a little easier to come back and adjust it because it'll be sort of scheduled to come back. So how do people feel about that? Or are most people want us to stick with the three?
Yeah, I guess it's, I'm just a little confused because if we go two years out and we, this is scheduled to come back, what's the difference between that and following the Prop 218 guidelines that were just discussed? Is there any difference?
Well, the process would be the same. The next, because tonight's just a study session, you're just giving general direction to bring something back. So this is helpful. So the way the Prop 218 would work is at the next meeting, you're going to set the hearing and which will trigger us to send out the notices which are required to be sent out at least 45 days before that hearing. So we, at the next meeting, you have an opportunity to actually make changes to what the note, the actual notice that's going to go out. And so you still have another chance to consider that. What I think staff's looking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, is hey, a general direction, are you comfortable with this mapping of what we project the needs to be in the next three years? And that's what can be brought back to you as a proposal that could be part of the noticing process.
Can, can I maybe, and maybe Alec can, or Steve can, just on the timing. So when we're talking, I just want to be clear on when that rate increase comes in. If we're talking three years, is that the 19, 20 year, 20, when does, what does that window look like?
It would be three years from today.
Well, no, three years from when we
From the beginning of each fiscal year. So
Oh, from each fiscal year.
So that starts on July 1 each fiscal year. And your charges for that fiscal year are put on the county tax rolls for that fiscal year. So it's collected mostly, I guess, December and March, February, March, April. So
I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood your question. I thought what you're asking is if we go with three years, when do we next have, start this whole process?
I was just asking when it kicks in, when the rate increase would kick in.
Increase, not the process.
Right. So that I understand sort of what that three-year window is on that.
July 1 of each of the next three years. So the first one would be July 1 of this year in about, you know, four months down the line, then each, you know, annual July 1 thereafter. But the people don't pay it until they pay the property taxes.
And then it would be sort of in mid-third fiscal year, you'd look at the following fiscal year. At this point, Mark's went, three years from now. That's what I wanted.
Three years from now. So in other words, what Alex is saying is that the process we're in now is going to presumably result in a rate change effective July 1, not 2019.
Right.
In spring or late winter of 2022, we would be doing the exact same, same thing again with the presumption that a new rate increase would kick in on July 1, 2022. That's what the three-year means.
Got it.
So what I was saying, two years is you'd move it up a year and we'd be having this discussion in February of 2021 instead of February 2022.
I just want to, there's no right or wrong answer on the number of years. Some agencies want to do five years so they don't have to keep going through the 218 process. There's some other agencies that are still doing one year at a time. So it's just kind of a balancing act of how far ahead you want to adopt the rates so you don't have to keep going through the process every year with two years, three years. I mean, it's council's prerogative.
We could do it every six months if we really liked this.
Sending out a lot of postcards then.
Would we prefer three months?
Palm Springs did like a 20-year increase. So that's the extreme that I've ever seen on the, so once every 20 years. So
So we appear to be roughly evenly split on a four and a half versus 5% envelope. And so we need to resolve that for staff. And then the other thing is this idea I teed up about doing it for two years as opposed to the staff recommendation of three years. I may be the only one who feels like that. And if so, that's fine, then that, we won't communicate that to staff, but.
I'm, I'm okay with the four and a half.
Okay. You okay with the four and a half?
Sure.
It's not a heck no?
No, it's fine. I'm happy with that.
All right. And I take it from the silence that I heard is people would rather stick with the three years, which is fine. It's, you know, there's, part of the reason this is difficult is because there's no obvious reason to do it one way or the other.
And the good news is you don't have to make the final decision tonight because this comes back to you. So you can noodle on that question for a couple more weeks before you see this again.
Fair enough. Okay. So do you have what you need, Jeff?
I think we have very clear direction with, with one minor question we'll have for you at the next time this comes back for you. And that's just be the number of years. And we can bring back anywhere from two to five for you to consider if that's, you know, if you're interested.
All I'm hearing is maybe two and three. I'm not hearing anything else. But Laura, did you want to say something?
Yeah. So I would just say, I mean, I don't know if there's an opportunity for consideration around the regular, the notice that you're legally, that we're legally bound to do to the community, but also maybe if there could be some education to help them understand kind of why we're doing this. Cause I know that there was some concern among community members about the bigger rate increase that happened a few years ago. And this could, you know, we could help them understand why, why we are where we are today. I think that would be helpful.
I'd like to do a spotlight issue to the community on this this year in conjunction with the, the rate increase decision that the council will be making. I think it's good timing. So thank you for the idea.
Feedback? All right. So that brings us to item 7B.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, you can.
Three-minute break? Three-minute break?
We, all right, we are adjourned for, till 9:10. Oops, we're receiving a presentation on the East Holly Pedestrian Improvement Project. Good evening, Steve. This, this is Evening with Steve.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair, City Council Members, Steven Machida, Director of Public Works. With me tonight, I actually have Steve Weinberger from W Trans, who will actually be giving a presentation on kind of the results of what we've kind of talked about in regards to the Holly Street pedestrian improvement plan. But prior to getting Steve aboard, actually, I just want to give you a little bit more history of the Holly Street and some of the items here, specifically on, on how we got where we got to be, and, and mainly it's in regards to the street itself. Basically, as you know, currently it's four lanes, two lanes each direction on Holly Street with limited parking on certain designated times. So back on September in 2013, actually, staff proposed to the TNC, Transportation and Circulation Commission, to restripe Holly Street to effectively use the two-lane capacities by adding kind of an additional lane. This was actually to help the peak traffic, move peak traffic through Holly Street and allow using the four lanes. However, the lane, the two lanes were actually, were not striped. So in the eastbound direction, traffic was allowed to form two lanes between 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM and from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. With westbound, traffic allowed to form two lanes between 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. So that was actually initially tried, however, basically, this model really didn't work quite well, but just because I think the drivers really didn't know how to navigate the lanes itself, although there's room for two lanes in each direction, they didn't know how to navigate, and they generally tend to, tended to stay within the middle lane. So back in July 2014, or excuse me, July 14, 2014, council adopted ordinance, admitting the parking restrictions on Holly from Industrial to Old County to 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So this is basically the morning, morning period. And the reason is, is just to provide kind of throughput, if you will, so to maintain four lanes of travel throughout the day. Besides actually doing this restriction and, and actually, excuse me, besides doing the restriction, they also wanted us to actually stripe another lane, so I can make it very clear that there are two lanes in each directions, you know, for the cars, and then opposite the 7 to 6:00 PM, parking, parking would be allowed. But during that time, the city wanted to really kind of find out the results or, you know, how, how does this functioning mainly? So they actually hired a traffic consultant to take traffic counts and do traffic runtimes before and after the modifications. So the modifications were done in November of 2014. Counts were taken kind of prior, so in August 2014, and then just slightly after the new improvements, the stripings were done, and then about three months later, in March 2015. The results of the, of the changes, basically, again, kind of remember is you're taking two periods going eastbound from 7:00 to 9:00 and from 3:00 to 6:00, where you have a period of time from 9:00 to 3:00 where you, you could park on the street versus going eastbound versus the same segment going eastbound, 7:00 to 6:00, there was no parking whatsoever, and that allowed the four, two lanes of traffic going eastbound. So the results said there were no noticeable changes to the traffic operation. Comparing both those scenarios along Holly Streets since the implementation of parking restriction and the restructuring to four lanes, traffic volumes were nearly identical in all four data, data periods, basically, you know, August, November, the beginning right after the striping, and then March 2015. And they determined that the speeds are actually lower on Holly Streets during the changes, and part of the reason they believe it was a result, they believe that because you had two cars side by sides moving, that some of the, some of the traffic was actually going a little bit slower. And then gaps were created to allow access to the driveways. So what we learned is the travel times really hadn't changed from the two different scenarios. Again, having two periods going eastbound were from 7:00 to 9:00 and from 3:00 to 6:00, where there was no parking on the eastbound direction versus from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, there's no parking. So there's really no change in the actual volumes, what they analyze. Westbound travel took a little bit longer than eastbound travel, and the lane configuration really didn't change on either side, so at Industrial or at Old County. And so that's, that's kind of what, what we learned as a result of that, and certainly we had, had that in discussions, but that, that's relative to the actual lane itself. So, you know, I know we're really talking about the pedestrians, but basically what we really did learn is, and I think Steve will kind of go, go through that in his presentation, but what we really learned is we really do need kind of the four lanes of travel, two lanes of each direction. I mean, it's very difficult to, to make, reduce the number of lanes going east or westbound on Holly Street, I think mainly because, you know, it would really affect throughput on Holly itself. So anyway, I just wanted to give you that little bit of introduction on what we had looked at, kind of history. I'm sure there's a lot more history, I'm still kind of researching that, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of history on what we did look at the two lanes and, and how the whole, four lanes and, excuse me, four lanes and two lanes of each direction, and how that parking was kind of generated. But unless there's other questions in regards to what I just presented, I'll be, I'd like to bring Steve Weinberger to kind of go over the, the study report of the Holly Street pedestrian improvements, and he could take it from here.
Thank you, Steve.
Go on to the next Steve. Good evening.
I was going to say, all Steve all the time.
All right. Good evening, Steve Weinberger, W Trans. I'm going to give you a presentation that we actually made in March of 2018 last year. This was a project that your staff gave us in late 2017. We made several presentations, came up with some alternatives. So since March, we haven't been asked to do anything further, so there's been nothing new since March. We've just been asked to come back and, and refresh you on that. So we're quickly going to review the study goals, give you some flavor of the community feedback we got through that previous process, go through existing quickly, get you, show you what the alternatives were that we came up with. Don't use the mouse. Okay, got it. All right. So these were the study goals that were given to us. It was focused on pedestrian safety. We were to look at vehicle operations, but it was really to come up with more livable pedestrian conditions, how do we create that on, on the corridor, and to engage the community in that process. We didn't have specific workshops dedicated to this, they were all through the, the TNC and, and council meetings. I'm sorry, the, the presentation is set up where we're going to show you the community feedback first, then we'll get into the alternatives, but the, those who spoke, we do have an alternative, or an alternatives where the sidewalk is, is pushed out, and the thing, one thing to remember about the corridor, you, at the narrowest section, which is most of that middle section, is 40 feet of pavement, curb to curb. It's got two five-foot sidewalks, but there is, so it's 50, but there is 60 feet of rideaway, so there is five, after the sidewalk ends, there is five more feet of public rideaway that has been incorporated into the front yards of some of the homes there. So you'll see various trees, fences, walls, that appear to be part of the yards of some of the homes, but those are in the public rideaway. So the, the public is concerned about the alternatives where the sidewalk is pushed out and encroaches towards their homes. It is going to require removal of some trees. There are, the lanes, the four lanes right now are four 10-foot lanes, which meet standards but is narrow, so there's concern about the, the safety of the, of the narrow streets. Whoops, sorry. Okay. There was some desire to include some permanent parking on Holly, so we do have an alternative that does keep some permanent parking. There was some discussion of bicycles. Street beautification was discussed, although not necessarily up there, there, there was discussions from residents of parking in their driveways, they need to fit their vehicles, and the loss of the five feet of public rideaway, if that were, become part of the sidewalk, they would loop, lose part of their driveways and some of their parking areas. There's also concern about speeding. Okay. So this shows you the existing traffic volumes in the morning, actually, both morning and evening is about 1,700 vehicles an hour. You'll see that the evening peak is more evenly split in each direction, where the morning is, the eastbound is the, the higher volume. And I'll tell you, a directional volume in the 800 to 1,000 And I'll tell you, a directional volume in the 800 to 1,000 range, where you have an approach that's controlled by traffic signal, you rarely see that with, with only one lane. It's very common to have a two-lane approach and then get a turn lane where you have a street with this volumes in the, in these directions. So I'm not surprised that the city has gone with a four lanes, two lanes in each direction with the volume demand that there's been. And as Stephen mentioned, the, back, I think, 2015, he mentioned the, you went to parking only from 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. and then from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., that parking lane was used as the second lane in each direction throughout the day. Shows you the, no parking signs there, but it also gives you flavor of the, the narrow five-foot sidewalks. So again, the, the photo on the left you're looking at, the five-foot sidewalk from the curb to the driveway, there is an additional five feet of public rideaway there. So the, the trees, the bush are actually in the public rideaway. Okay. So the alternatives that we developed, analyzed, alternative one was the road diet alternative. So converting that 40 feet of pavement to, from four lanes to three lanes. And you'll see, we went with slightly wider center lane and then created three feet of landscape buffer, since the goal was to really make this street more pedestrian-friendly, give pedestrians a little more comfort in the street. So we created these three feet of buffer and provided a little bit wider sidewalk. So although this, this alternative had less than 40 feet of pavement, but we utilized that public rideaway for that. So in this alternative, with the three lanes, you would have less lanes to handle the traffic. We did simulate that and we did have significant increase in delay at the Old County intersection and industrial road intersections due to the loss of capacity. We had a critical queuing conditions created, additional travel time. So we do have a report that kind of covered in detail those conditions, but those were all determined to be in, this was determined to be infeasible because of those. The, the next two alternatives were focusing on relocating the sidewalk, but keeping the four lanes of traffic. And you'll see, we have, we have two of those, 2A and 2B. I'll cover 2A first. So if you look at the graphic, you'll see those four 10-foot lanes remain. And then what we did is, we just assumed that the sidewalks would be pushed back towards the edge of the public property line and widened to six feet. And then some greenery, trees, landscaping, some beautification would be used as a buffer between the vehicle traveling and the sidewalk. I'll have to tell you that when, like I said, a 10-foot lane is, meets standards. And a five-foot sidewalk meets standards, sometimes when you put those two next to each other, that five feet is gonna seem narrower than five and that, and the 10-foot travel lane is gonna seem narrower since you're up against the curve. So not the most optimum use of those dimensions when you put them together. So you'll see in this alternative, summarized there on the left, it was gonna maintain that parking restriction during the day, since we're utilizing the same number of lanes as there, there is now. There was gonna be no change to travel time or intersection operations. There were gonna be about 40 trees removed and impacts utilities along the corridor. And I'll cover that in the cost estimate here towards the end. The other sort of alternative that main, that relocated the sidewalk, this one, we also added parking on one side of the street. So you'll see on the right side, we added the parking lane and then pushed the sidewalk out towards the edge of the property line. So we're utilizing that, that five feet of, of public rideaway for the sidewalk and the room gained was for the parking. On the other side, we, we went with a wider sidewalk. So on one side of the street, you can have a wider sidewalk or a sidewalk, at least with a landscape strip to provide some buffer, more buffer than you do now. On the other side, the parked cars would provide as the traffic calming effect or separation between the pedestrian and the vehicle. This alternative has not been drawn out, but we did potentially discuss envisioning a scenario where you would have parking on one side of the street for maybe half the street and then switch it over to the other half, the other side of the street for the other half of the street is, is a possibility with some transition. This, similar to the other alternative, because we were essentially wiping out the excess, you know, that five feet of public rideaway, took out those 40 trees, similar to the other one, impacting the utilities. And again, since we had the same number of lanes, same capacity, the intersections did not have any change in operations or travel time. These were some of the other alternatives that folks mentioned as, asked us if we can consider. And discussing these with city staff at the time, we felt that all of these were not feasible. Speed tables and, or speed humps are, are not really recommended for streets with this high a traffic volume. You're gonna have the increased noise of utilizing those. And it was thought that sort of flexible barriers would not be, sort of create this tunnel effect and, and not necessarily provide the, the desired effect that people wanted. And again, reversible lanes, because that evening peak has a really balanced flow, reversible lanes doesn't gain you the room you need. So this is a summary with the cost estimates that we did for each of those three alternatives. Again, this is from Old County to industrial. So you'll see the first one, the road diet, which was estimated 2 million, but the, the vehicle operational impact, since the loss of lanes, created unacceptable conditions at the intersections, excessive queuing, additional travel time in the corridor. You'll see 2A and 2B range from 1.6 to 2.2 million, but we had, when we presented these, we did have a number of neighbors objecting to the shift towards the homes, taking out landscaping, fences, walls, et cetera. There was, as a follow-up to, in our last meetings, we did add another alternative, which was essentially keeping the corridor as it is, but restriping the road and providing, and refurbishing the existing sidewalk. So not much expected change, other than some slightly upgrade of the, the sidewalk facility and, and possible, you know, restriping of the road to facilitate the traffic. There we go. Okay. I believe that's the end of the presentation. When we brought the, our last presentation at this point, received public comment, we were not given any further direction from your staff to take it any further until we presented here tonight. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you both, Steves. Questions for either Steve?
Thank you for your presentation. It's very helpful and the reading packet information was also very informative. On this slide where you talk about infeasible corridor improvements, you talk about flexible barriers and reversible lanes. Could you describe in a little bit more detail what you mean when you say flexible barrier and reversible lanes? What is, what does that mean?
Let me cover, cover the reversible lane question first. So the thought was that if we went to the road diet alternative, so if we converted the three lane, the four lanes to three, to create the additional space that we can get for the buffering, that maybe the center lane can be a reversible lane. So you'd have one, the peak direction in, in the morning peak and then take that same lane and reverse it for the other, the other peak. So you, so in the one peak hour, you'd have one lane in one direction, two in the other, and then the reverse of that in the evening. But as I pointed out, the traffic volumes in the evening are, are very, fairly split, 800, 880. So although in theory, it, it, it might look like it'll work, but when you look at those volumes, you're gonna still have operational impacts because you're making one direction, which is still 800 vehicles an hour, travel in one lane now. The morning is a possible situation where reversible lane works, because you have a, one direction is higher than the other in terms of traffic volume demand. But the evening, they're, they're split. So the reversible lane doesn't gain you anything or solve the congestion issue. And in order to operate as a reversible lane, it would mean lights overhead to indicate to traffic if it's Xed out. It's not a, you're not to use in that direction. You have a green arrow in the opposite direction, but still wouldn't help with operations. So the flexible barriers, the thought was, usually like, we call them candlesticks. They're just rubberized sticks about three feet tall. Sometimes those are installed either in a median situation or edge line situation where you wanna warn traffic to stay off the edge of the road. But we're just looking for a way to provide some type of separation. And you wanna obviously allow access to the driveways. So placing those candlesticks, what somebody had suggested, but you would have sort of this tunnel effect of many three-foot tall, high, yellow posts in between driveways. And was not thought to be really aesthetically pleasing for a street like this. Okay.
Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I've, my first question is on the study area slide that says PM peak hour traffic has remained constant or decreased due to regional congestion and travel patterns over 10 years. I'm wondering if you can elaborate on that a little bit.
I believe we did collect traffic volumes here in the corridor at the, in the fall of 2017. And we did compare those with the previous counts that Stephen had alluded to. And so I don't believe there was a significant increase from 2015 to 2017. And there may have, I, I, it's been a while, so you know, that I've seen the volumes, but I believe what it refers to is there, there's maybe been a slight decrease in volumes when we compared them with the previous volumes. So we were speculating that might be due to some regional congestion issues.
And, and in the, the age of ways and traffic apps, how, how, how do your studies take into account, you know, now, you know, even when I leave my house now and I'm looking at where I'm going, I, I know where I'm going, but I'll still use ways to avoid congested areas. So can you take into account any of those intangibles in your studies?
Well, in a study like this, we are focusing on really two signaling intersections, Old County and industrial intersection and the traffic volumes between. We, this isn't a citywide study where we're looking at what other routes are available. That could be a, a next step to seeing what other routes are available to get traffic from the city to 101. Just to answer your question, the whole, the ways and, you know, the apps, it's the, the traffic and during community is struggling with that. I mean, we, we are actually able to get some data in some cases, but it's, it's, and that's all evolving, but it's not sort of part of the mainstream evaluation where we're able to, to get a hold of. Some of that data is proprietary, some is accessible. So it didn't enter in, into this study at all, because we were focused on just one, this one corridor.
Okay. And my last question, thank you for that, is, you know, as we're presenting these alternatives to the community, I'm wondering what the thought process was behind not including going back to the way Holly was with four lanes just during the commute times?
You know, I, I don't recall that alternative being discussed. I'd have to look in the report to see if we have daily volumes, to see how much they vary throughout the day. We were focusing on the peak hours, the peak commute hours, which clearly indicate the need for the lanes in between. I, I can't tell you, but I can refer to it in my report to see if there was any daily volumes that we saw, if there was enough of a decrease where you can operate the street with less than those four lanes in between. I don't know at this moment, but I have to look at the data.
I can add to that too, that specifically when the council commissioned this study, they had just received a report on the changes and that was not the direction that the council had given staff as a potential alternative.
In fact, if, jumping ahead of you here, Adam, as I recall, I mean, this got put into the, it got added to the study of increasing pedestrian safety along St. Carlos Avenue. We added this one and it was, it was sort of, and I'm not saying, I'm not objecting to the work that was done. I'm just saying the focus was on pedestrian safety in the corridor.
That's correct. It was on pedestrian safety in the corridor and the, the council had just received a report on sort of the outcome of the changes that they had made and
Right.
Had a healthy debate on the subject, but settled on believing that issue where it was. And then subsequently came up as a result of a drunk driving incident on St. Carlos Avenue.
Right. Adam?
Thank you. I guess one question was, you talked about traffic volume and this, we're talking about pedestrian safety. Do you have any ideas about sort of pedestrian volume on Holly and sort of what that is and how that's changed?
I believe the data we collected did include pedestrian crossing volumes at the two intersections. I don't believe that pre, the data from the previous years included pedestrian volumes. Collecting pedestrian crossing volumes, we've gotten to the point in our industry where we're pretty much doing it routinely, but it's fairly new in the last few years to collect pedestrian volumes unless you're specifically focused on a pedestrian safety issue. So we, I, there is volumes that I can look at to give you an idea of the number of pedestrians. Not a, not a high volume for a street like this. Your downtown has much more, obviously higher pedestrian volumes. There are pedestrians on the street, but not at a rate that you constantly see them whenever you, say you drive by. But I don't believe we had any data prior to that to compare it with.
So there's some data, but nothing to compare it to, essentially, is what you're telling, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And well, I guess if it's possible, get that data at some point and be helpful. And then the, the number three alternative, I didn't see a cost estimate for that. Is that something that's possible to get as well?
There was not a cost estimate completed for the last one. It was There was not a cost estimate completed for the last one. It was, and I, again, it's been a year since we presented this. And the report that was done was prior to the last presentation. So that last report wasn't updated with that alternative. It was, we were asked to come back with a new presentation, and then things were put on the shelf at that point. So we were never asked to go back and provide that information.
Okay. And then on the restriping, that's just on number three. And so is that just a, so it's side, it's restriping crosswalks also, or just the street and the parking? Or what was the thought around, just restriped the corridor? So I just try to understand what that meant.
Right. We were asked to also present an alternative where we were essentially repaving, restriping the road. So it would be exactly how it's striped now, just sort of a, a new overlay paving and so clearer striping and to reconstruct the sidewalk. So essentially sprucing the street up with the exact same dimensions it is now.
And then, so last piece would just be kind of a comment. I think for me, when I think about the pedestrian safety over there, it's also not just that, it's sort of extending to El Camino. To me, is what's almost more interesting to understand as well, getting from sort of Holly across to El Camino into downtown or other areas, just given the new volume of residents with the transit village and other areas, sort of how that affects the pedestrian safety over there as well. But that seems like that's sort of a different study or in addition to this study.
Laura?
Yeah. So in the agenda packet, in the conclusions for the report that was provided that parallels this presentation, it mentions the fact that the residents who live there effectively weren't satisfied with any of these potential options and wanted other options to be explored. Not an expert in traffic and circulation by any stretch, but what other options might there be to achieve the goals of, that were outlined for the purpose of the study, which is around pedestrian safety, connectivity, mobility along Holly Street, as well as, you know, bicycle and that type of thing.
Well, with, with the restriction that we were operating on to main, to keep the transportation facilities within the existing public right of way, we explored all the possible alternatives that you can create in that width, without, without going to a, say, exaggerated, let's narrow the road to just two lanes. And then we'd have room for parking, room for bike lanes, room for the sidewalks. We didn't go that far. We went as far as the three-lane section to show the possibility of what the cross section can look like with three lanes, but then found that we had significant traffic, vehicle traffic congestion. So we then abandoned that, you know, going any further with that and looking, all right, if we kept the, kept the four lanes, what can we do with the space that's left? So we were operating under that restriction of your 60-foot right of way.
So I just have one or maybe two questions. I think they're, they're interrelated. And I appreciate the detail that went into this. What I'm curious about is, is what I think of as kind of an intermediate alternative. You looked at alternatives where we use basically the entirety of the remaining five foot of public right of way on each side to move sidewalks out or out from the road, put a planter strip in, do various other things. And one of the downsides to that is, is that it causes the removal of quite a few trees and structures that people have built in the public right of way and whatnot. So my question is, if, if this is even possible, if we, if we simply moved the sidewalk, say, a foot or more away from the road, but no more than that, and put basically, I don't know, some form of bollards in that area, it's not wide enough to be a planter strip, you couldn't put trees in there, for example. First of all, does that potentially improve pedestrian safety? I don't know whether a bollard of the kind you could fit in that narrow strip, if it actually provides any safety at all, but assuming it did. Is it also something where, because we've only moved the sidewalk a foot or so, that we haven't necessarily destroyed too many trees or too many structures? That's what I'm calling an intermediate thing.
Right. You know, I think that would need an evaluation of the trees, because the trees aren't, it's not a street tree condition where all the trees are in line with one another. There's a whole variety of trees that have been planted over the years that are in various locations. So you'd have to evaluate a surveyed plan of where the trees are located and how, you know, you know, how much, there's 40 trees within that five-foot strip total on both sides. So say if you only went to two and a half, how many trees would that be? That would need to be explored. It has not been.
Okay. If I may ask the other, either Steve, there's many reasons why this idea could fail. And I'm not trying to push it because it's something I just thought of as I was listening to the presentation. But do, do bollards even hypothetically provide safety when they're of that size? And, and off the top of your head, is it like, great Mark, that's a $10 million project? You know, just, I'm trying to see whether it's worth even suggesting looking at it further. That's, that's what I'm really getting at.
Well, bollards, you know, they, they can provide some, some protection, I guess, depending on the location. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around this, but depending on the location of, you know, if it's going to be adjacent to the, to this curb and gutter, you know, you're going to have utilities there, obviously. And then if you also have parking adjacent to that, you know, how is that?
How's the door open on the car? Right. You'd have to open into the street.
And then, you know, how are you going to space that relative to the other poles? You have streetlight poles, other poles that might be in the sidewalk. And then, as Steve had alluded to, certainly, we could look at it. And, you know, we haven't had that inventory of the trees. But there are some, like retaining walls, you know, even like right behind the sidewalk. And so, you know, the one-foot setback may not.
Right. That would, that would affect that. Actually, that's very helpful. And if I decide to suggest the idea officially, I'll do so. But thank you. I don't need to talk about it any further. Any other questions? All right. I do have two public speaker cards here from Holly Jones and Priya, I should know how to pronounce your name, Priya Premchendran? Close enough. So you each have two minutes if you'd like to come up.
Can we swap the order?
You can do it whenever order you like. Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I'm going to look at my notes. So it's not, I'm not trying to be rude, not making eye contact. So yes, my name is Priya. I am resident of Holly Street. And I first want to touch upon the study session and how this process really came about. No one in our community even knows that this is a topic that is actually on the agenda today. And, and that's a problem because, as it was mentioned, this was something that we talked about a year ago. And forever since that, you know, we've been waiting to hear about like what's going on. And this is the first that I know through an email that I got from the city staff that this is even on the agenda. And so my, my, you know, you know, plea to the, to the city staff and the council is that, you know, the residents deserve to hear from the city. It's not sufficient to just send an email to one resident and expect that, you know, that resident spreads the word on this. And, you know, it's imperative that, you know, for a topic as critical as this, especially for people living on Holly Street, that we have a transparent, inclusive, and fair process. And, and we hope that, you know, we get a seat at the table when these discussions happen. So that's just, I just want to mention that because of how, you know, we are today. And we really don't have the community represented here as much as we have seen in the past commission meetings. On the study itself, I just want to say that, you know, I'm reading what the report is. And also, there was a Daily Post article of which the Public Works Director was quoted. It's disappointing to see that the recommendation that the report includes overlooks everything that was part of the four study sessions that the rest, which, part of the four study sessions by the Transportation Circulation Commission and the feedback and the discussion that the community had engaged in. It seems that, you know, the recommendation that city has put forward is somewhat is kind of serving, you know, a prior, already decided, you know, path that the city has taken because of, you know, certain issues like, you know, the traffic flow and the traffic direction being off the table even, even before. There was a, there was a robust discussion and a validation of those. The other things I want to mention is that, you know, when it comes to pedestrian safety, you cannot address pedestrian safety on Holly Street unless you talk about traffic. They are interrelated. And that's exactly what the consultant just talked about. You know, we have speed issues, we have flow issues.
Are you close to being finished?
I just need like one more minute.
You're already almost a minute over.
Okay. Anyways, I'll just get to this fast. So that's one thing. The other thing is basically taking five feet from a right of way, which just seems to be the option that's put forward, eliminates parking for us. We already don't have parking, and that eliminates parking from us. And so it's essentially, it's, it's, you know, where do we park? You have wider curb cuts, you know, it's hard to get in and out of a driveway. There's hardly any sidewalk as a result of these options. So it's not just about the trees. It's about, you know, basic, you know, amenities that as homeowners, we, we completely lose. And we've already adjusted to a lot of losses that has caused because of the lane changes that happened despite.
Priya, I really need to ask you to finish. You're way over time.
Okay. I'm almost done. The last thing is basically if the city could just act on the promises that have been already made, which is managing the speed, enforcing the speed limit, enforcing that trucks and large vehicles don't go down Holly, which are a critical part of the problem, that alone could be a great start for us to really address some of the safety issues, which seems is, has not happened so far. So I'll pause over there.
Priya, you really need to end.
Yes, I'm done. Yeah.
Okay. Good. I'm glad you're done. Thank you.
So anyways, I just hope that the city would take the opportunity to really get this really right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Priya. Holly Jones.
Hi there. I'm Holly, and I live on Holly Street. You'll remember me easy. So anyways, I have quite a bit to say just because I only found out about it because my good friend Priya, who lives across the street from me, told me about the meeting. And it's just kind of really disturbing to think that somebody's talking about maybe possibly taking away some of my property, and I don't even know about it. And but so good thing she told me about the meeting. Anyway, I just thought, I'm kind of like trying to appeal to your sense of good nature. And because I think that if you were to hear that somebody's talking, taking away some of your property, you might feel passionate and want to keep speaking for another minute like she did. So I'm not trying to, but I'm just trying to get you to try to think about it like as if it was your own property. Let's see, I'm sorry, sorry. I need you also to consider that if you take away the street parking, that if you take away five feet of the front yard or our front yard and our driveway, that leaves nowhere for us to go. And I don't really know what else to say about that. I think that we need to focus on other ways to get to and from 101. And that this is a residential street, just like your own. And please imagine if someone was taking away your own property and your own parking, removal of the trees. I know he mentioned some of the trees, but I think it's pretty much all the trees. And then it makes me think about, what's that Hillsdale? And how, like, where's the charm there? And then it just makes me sad. Another thing I was thinking about is the, it's time to study the other routes and encouraging other ways of getting places instead of Holly Street because just Holly Street is turning into a disaster. But I really appreciate what you mentioned about with studying the pedestrian and pedestrian volume. And I would say that it has definitely decreased very recently because they've just closed down a bunch of the homeless encampments that were down at the end. And the volume of people that were traveling on Holly Street has dramatically decreased. And I'm grateful for that. But, but at the same time, I know we still have people that commute to go to work and whatnot. But, but definitely fewer people. Anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Holly. And thank you for honoring the time limit. All right. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the council on this topic? Not seeing anyone. Open mic time, discussion. What, if any feedback, do we want, or direction do we want to give staff?
Before, before we get to that, could we, I just, a couple of comments that Holly and Priya made were around feeling like there was a lack of notification about the topic tonight. Jeff, I'm wondering, could you talk a little bit about all the different mechanisms or ways that people can opt in to hear about upcoming agenda items, just so this community is aware of the resources so that they can stay informed and connected when things pop up?
Absolutely. And if Stephen has anything to ask and add in terms of specific notifications for, for this and throughout the process, feel free to do that at the end, Stephen. But the, the, the primary tool that we have available is through our e-notify system. You can sign up for all council agendas and monitor items. Sometimes there are subtopics that you can sign up for, community members can sign up for to be. And this is an item that has a subtopic, so you could sign up for that. And anytime there's a, any city council or commission agenda item, you would receive an automatic notification. We try to do special directed notifications whenever we can, but obviously, we can't do that community-wide on every issue. And an issue like this, while it does directly affect the homeowners, and we certainly understand that, we've, we've heard many times at many council meetings and commission meetings from people throughout the community. So that's where we're at. And Stephen, I don't know what we did specific to this.
So I know the city engineer actually had contacted Priya in regards to this meeting. I know there has been concern. I know this was a study session. You know, certainly, it was not staff's intent to actually make a decision or make a recommendation on which direction to go. I think what we wanted to try to do is present some of the options that we had heard. And then, you know, some of the options that were probably more favored by the neighbors. Certainly, you know, we listened to it and we tried to model it. Unfortunately, from a overall traffic operation standpoint, it would be really hard to support that direction or that model, mainly because it would impact a greater area than, than certainly Holly Street. You know, I know there had been some discussions in regards to perhaps looking at a larger study area to look through, cut through traffic, to look through speeding and things. And certainly, we could do that. And, you know, I'm more than happy to kind of coordinate that effort with, for instance, on speeding, whether it's enforcement, talk to the sheriff's department on that. However, I guess the real concern that we had is we could certainly look at a larger area. But the fact is, Holly Street has that limited right of way. And we basically, from, from just true operation, traffic operation standpoint, we really do need the 40-foot width, travel width, curb-to-curb-face width. And so that leaves us a very little, little room to actually do some of the improvements that we may want to do. And so what we're hoping to do is, you know, try to have this discussions. And if, if council had any other directions that you would want us to proceed, certainly, we could kind of move in that direction. My concern about actually doing a lot of additional study or certainly reducing the lane width on Holly, that would may actually have some unintended consequences such that you're actually redirecting traffic to some of the neighboring or surrounding streets, such that now they are starting to see more cut-through traffic than, than what they're normally experiencing now.
Adam, I see your lights on, but feel free just to jump in.
Okay. Sorry. I forgot. We're in.
Open mic.
Open mic, free, free form here. So I had one, I guess, question around this, and then I'll kind of give some feedback is, maybe I'll put it in the comment question first. So I appreciate the thoughts around, because I hadn't really thought about the impact of the sidewalk movement on the driveways, because you're sort of making them smaller, make it harder to get in. And I see the challenge around that, given that there are certainly, I think, some bigger, bigger or wider driveways or wider parking spaces. But if you make it too difficult to get in there, you're sort of creating some challenges that are sort of not really possible. So you can't really do that. I'm wondering, I guess, a question I had in terms of overall parking in the area, we have a permit parking program for the east side. Is, do the residents at Holly, do they have access to permit park on those other streets on the east side? Or is that, how does that set up for, if they maybe chose not to, if they didn't want to park on the street, didn't have enough room in their driveway and could park on B port or one of the other streets there?
So it's minor, well, I know that Holly Street is not part of the residential parking permit program. I did talk to the staff member who was in charge of, you know, the program itself. I did talk to the staff member who was in charge of, you know, the program itself, and it was her understanding that the Holly residents did not, well, although they wanted to be a part of a program, it wasn't the same model that we use on the greater east side, San Carlos. In other words, they wanted to actually have limited parking on the weekends, or permit parking on the weekends, as compared to the Monday through Friday.
So I guess what I'm asking, though, is if I'm a resident on Holly, could I participate in the parking permit program on another street on the east side currently?
Well, we actually look at that, you know, possibility, where I believe there's 36 residents on Holly. If they all participated, I believe you're allowed six parking permits, if you will. So that would add about 216 additional cars, potential cars, on other streets. You know, we haven't really done any counts. The way our program works, it's basically you issue permits, however, that doesn't necessarily guarantee a parking space within that zone.
But so if I'm living on McHugh or one of the other streets over there, I would get, per resident, you get six permits?
You get up to six permits. So that would...
And some of that's guest, or some of it's...
So it's four regular permits plus two guests.
So you could potentially look at some modified version for Holly Street residents to say you can get two or something as an option. I don't know if that's helpful or not, but I'm just curious if that's, you know, not saying that we want to take away parking permanently or the after-six or anything else, just in general, give more flexibility to those residents. Overall, I'd be interested in just sort of learning more about that option.
Other comments? Sarah?
I have a lot of comments. I had the pleasure of speaking with Priya yesterday on the phone, just to, you know, I met Priya out on the campaign, I met Holly too, and I wanted to circle back, just so I could, as a new council member, I wanted to kind of circle back with their thoughts. When you don't have parking outside of your home, you can't get the plumber to show up during working hours. You can't get deliveries of any sort. You can't have the UPS driver pull into your driveway to drop off your package. You know, as busy parents and most families, you know, here in San Carlos are two-income working parents, you have your dry cleaning delivered. I mean, it's, not having parking in front of your house impacts your quality of life, and this is something that as a council, I think that we're going to start talking about more, which is why I asked Stephen, you know, why we weren't at least having the option on the table of going back to the way Holly was. And it's something, I went back and read the minutes of the Transportation and Circulation Commission meeting from March 20th, and residents raised that issue five times, by five separate people, the request to at least talk about referring back to the original configuration of Holly Street, which is not going down to two lanes, it's four lanes during commute hours. I'm also a little confused with, you know, if this is part of the San Carlos pedestrian study, for the San Carlos pedestrian study, we as a city sent out postcards, we sent out, we scheduled meetings at Arundel for people, the community at large, to come to, and that wasn't done in this case. I know that this case has been going on for a very long time, but it might be something to consider. I think that Holly Street needs some short-term solutions and some long-term solutions, and I've heard residents say that we really need kind of a grander plan for the east side as we grow and we develop. We've talked about that tonight, where the traffic is going to go and how that's going to impact other streets. But pedestrian safety is really important, and, you know, looking at the pictures in this report and seeing the broken sidewalks, and, you know, I wouldn't want to walk on that street right now. Maybe pedestrians aren't using that street to walk their baby strollers because it's not safe, and maybe they would walk more downtown if it was safer. So I would like to study it more. I appreciate, Stephen, the points that you made at the very beginning, that there was no noticeable changes between, you know, having the four lanes for commute hours and the four lanes all the time during the day. That really stands out to me. I feel like we keep trying to make Holly Street something that it's not, which is this grand arterial to 101, and to me, it's a residential street with single-family homes and people raising their kids there. And I do want to, it was brought up tonight to really look at, you know, how other ways that we can get on and off 101, and I think that we as a city can do a little more to look at traffic going down Britton and making a left on industrial, that's how I go to So, yeah, I'm putting those thoughts out there. I know that traffic flow is very difficult, and it's kind of playing whack-a-mole. We hit it on one street, and it goes to the next, and it's a grand plan. I think that's what we need, we need a big plan. But I also see in the short term that there's some quality of life issues that we really need to tackle.
I guess I'll just, I have a somewhat different perspective, because with Ron not being here, I'm one of the only folks on, in fact, I'm the only person on the dais who is here when this change was originally made. It's a classic example to me of there is no good answer. And quality of life is definitely an important issue. Quality of life of all the people in San Carlos who go through that arterial corridor, because it is, unfortunately, that's the way it was designed, is an arterial residential corridor. It's a very unusual combination historically. That's, you know, there are concerns there as well. I've certainly heard from plenty of people who, when they hear that the council may be thinking of reversing the earlier decision, and if the council decides to do that, that's fine. I'm not, you know, I'm not going to lose any sleep over it. But I hear from people who say that if that were to be done, they would be really angry. They would be really angry about the negative impact on them, and wonder why they're being ignored, and they felt they were being ignored for a long time. And that's not at all to minimize the effect and the impact that the change has had on the folks who live there. That's what I meant when I said that it has no good solution. It's, and to one other comment about along those lines, sort of to frame this a little bit for what staff was tasked with doing. This council may wish to give staff a larger set of instructions and launch a bigger project. That's fine. The project that staff was given by the former council, which resulted in the material that we see here tonight, was literally a much narrower focus. It was not intended to be a go-off-and-study-all-traffic-flows-on-the-east-side-and-decide-how-we-could-make-a-master-plan-to-make-things-better, because there had been some discussions about that over the years, and nothing ever seemed to go well enough to justify doing it yet again in the former council's mind. And, you know, so it was more narrowly focused on, given the current situation, what could we do to potentially make pedestrian safety better in the corridor? And to me, one of the things I learned from this whole process, and I appreciate the input that community members and staff members have had on this, I, if you would have asked me before I saw the results here, I would have thought there would have been some willingness, given the concerns voiced, for the residents to say, okay, you can take part of the front yard, if you do, if you rearrange some other things, because we're really concerned about pedestrian safety. We want to be able to walk on the sidewalk more safely. I accept the fact that that is not of interest to the community, to the neighborhood, but that was a surprise to me, and that was a piece of data that I'm glad we did the work to find out that that's not of interest to folks. But in any event, you know, that's just sort of my sense, Sarah, a little bit different perspective perhaps than you were offering. I wish there was a better answer. I've seen a lot of work done in this. For now, it's, I don't really see one. But that's just me.
Were we still in the open mic?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, okay. So for me, this was very helpful to get this background information, to better understand kind of what some of the considerations have been, and as I get up to speed on, it's a very complicated issue. And, you know, I believe that it is part of our responsibility to ensure that the community stays safe. You know, pedestrian, and I did attend the pedestrian bicycle discussion that took place at the library, and I believe that that was all of San Carlos, was it not? And there will be another session on Tuesday evening, so there'll be another opportunity to attend. That takes place, I believe, at the L'Oreal Park, 6 to 8, if I'm not mistaken. And in any event, my point is, is that this is a, I agree with Mark, that this is hugely complicated. I'm also concerned, too, about the impending development that's going to be happening on industrial, because I think that's also going to have another profound effect on Holly Street. And I don't, I personally don't feel equipped to be able to provide staff with any specific kind of direction based on this one report this evening, just because of there's so many layers to this. And, you know, and I do think that, you know, obviously, the input of the community is very helpful, and I'm seeing that none of these alternatives are, they're not acceptable, right? So where does that leave us? And that's where I'm kind of scratching my head right now, because I would like to try to address it in some way and make life better for the people who live there and the people who use that corridor. But I don't have any ideas at this point, and I think personally, I'll just need some time to think about it and do a bit more study to figure out what the options are, again, against the backdrop of other, you know, things that are impacting our community with respect to traffic and development.
So I guess, let me interrupt just procedurally. Given that we still have one more item to discuss, I'd like to entertain a motion that we extend the meeting to 11, with the hope that we actually won't use the whole time.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions?
It voted yes.
Okay, it voted yes. Go ahead, sorry.
I guess, just trying to move things forward on this, I appreciate that this is a complex and challenging issue, and I agree, there's no sort of, you know, I don't want to just keep throwing Band-Aids at it. So I do think it's something we maybe want to keep discussing at some point, but for me, at least in the, in the short term, I think at least doing the restriping side seems to be at least a reasonable thing. Let's just, at least from visibility standpoint, that's probably for crosswalks and the street, and the parking is probably a reasonable thing, at least do, to give direction to staff to do right now. And then maybe kind of be, I'd personally be interested in reaching out to the folks on the east side, having a deeper conversation about stuff, and trying to get more feedback from them on things. You know, it could be in a broader community thing, but at least I would separately like to be able to do that.
You know, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I, in my meandering comments, I like the idea of restriping. I also like, I like the idea of repairing the sidewalks. Interestingly enough, the next item on our agenda is to talk about the sidewalk repair program. And in the particular case of repairing the sidewalks in Holly Street, I have sort of a question for, I think it's a Greg question. Given our existing policy, which splits the cost 50/50 of repairing a sidewalk, is it possible for us to make, what would be involved with us making an exception, saying that's the general rule, but for this particular sidewalk in this corridor, we'll pay the whole thing?
Well, I think that'd be a project that you would agendize.
But we could do it as a project.
Yeah.
Right? We don't have to change our sidewalk policy.
You wouldn't have to if you called it a project.
Oh, call it a project. Okay. Then I will just indicate that for me, I like the idea of the restriping and repairing the sidewalk, but I think that it would be piling insult on injury to say to the residents of Holly Street corridor, you've got to pay for half of the sidewalk repair. So for me, I'd rather allocate public funds to pay for the whole thing. Don't know how I even know. And we can't decide that tonight anyway, because that's a separate item.
I think that sounds great. And I agree with the restriping, too. We should, short term, that should be a priority.
Any other comments? Jeff, do you have some sense of direction?
We'll prepare that for council consideration and bring it forth to the council on a future agenda item as soon as it's ready to go.
Okay, great, thank you. That's 7B, so we will move on to 8A. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the On-Call Sidewalk Repair Project C9465-18, and authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with C2R Engineering, Inc. of Mountain View in a not-to-exceed amount of $360,000. And what a surprise, it's Steve again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, City Council members. Steve Machida, Director of Public Works. So as you stated, this is the On-Call Sidewalk Repair Project. The importance of maintained sidewalks, basically, it allows for safe pedestrian travel, for paritribute hazards, both vertical and horizontal displacements. It is required by the American Disability Act that we maintain our sidewalks to allow users to access to the sidewalk and then add value to the individual properties. So I won't really read these two, but these are the two codes. One is the California Streets Highway Code, Section 5610, where it does talk about the owners of a lot fronting any portion of a public street shall maintain the sidewalks in the conditions in front of their house. And similar to this San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 12.04.020, the ordinance, very similar in language, but the owner of a lot fronting any portion of the sidewalk shall maintain the sidewalk in a safe, non-dangerous condition. So these are the two codes that we kind of base on our sidewalk repair program. So the city sidewalk provides financial assistance, so actually, let me step back. So basically, council has adopted, prior to that, or prior to our 50/50 cost share, we have been requiring all property owners to actually pay for those improvements themselves. So I believe this is in 2016, the financial assistance, council gave direction that we wanted to do a different type of program, where property owners would actually cost share with the city 50% of the cost to replace the sidewalk. So the city, one of the advantages, the city actually coordinates those efforts on a large-scale kind of citywide program. The process is streamlined, and it is a little bit more efficient for the property owners to kind of work through the city, because we actually kind of manage, administer and manage the contractor, and so hopefully, we get better competitive pricing as a result of the number of locations that we actually repair. And then we know that, you know, the work that's done will be in compliance with the city and state codes. So this is kind of the flow chart of how we go about inspecting and deciding on the program. So basically, sidewalks, if there's any defect, are brought to attention to staff. We kind of do a preliminary investigation, but generally, this goes on the list, so this location goes on the list. But staff does the investigation and value, it's the type of repair that's going to be needed to be done, whether it's just a small little, what do they call it, flag or square repair, or whether it needs a full reconstruction, including curb gutter and sidewalk. So properties are notified of the sidewalk repairs, and then we ask them if they wish to opt into the program or not. If they wish to opt in, you know, we put them on the list, and then we actually tally them up to ensure that we just work off the list of the next repair. And so each task order, we actually have to contact those property owners next on the list to determine whether they actually wish to kind of opt into the 50/50 sidewalk repair program. If they do, then we actually put them on the list. We typically try to do, you know, about 30, 30 locations a task order. But basically, we, what we determine is, once we determine those 30, we actually do the repair, go out, well, we go out for a contract, we usually do those repairs, and then we do the work itself, knowing that the owner has agreed to participate in the program. So once the work is completed and it's all inspected and accepted by the city, then we actually bill the owner for the work that would be done. You know, prior to whether the contract, or excuse me, whether the owner elects to opt in, we actually kind of let them know the approximate cost for the repair it's going to be, depending upon when we did the initial inspection and when we actually do the work. Sometimes there could be a two-year delay, in which case, in some cases, the crack or the defect actually becomes worse, and so it may require a little bit more repair. So we, again, make sure that, you know, the homeowner is good with the costs that we As I mentioned, after the work is done, we would invoice the homeowner, and then assuming that homeowner pays, they're fine. If the homeowner or we don't receive the payment, we may send out reminder notices. If the homeowner, or we don't receive the payment, we may send out reminder notices. And if they still don't repay, then we actually may go to the city council or will go to the city council and ask if we could place, place the charges on their tax roll because, on the property tax roll for the work that was being done. So the total project budget is $180,000, of which 120 is contribution to the program. So what we're really looking at is we have $60,000 that the city contributes. We have $60,000 is reimbursement by the property owners and then we have $60,000 for the administration and repairs of the contract. So really, the $60,000 that we get, receive from the homeowners actually doesn't go into the project itself for, for the repairs. It's the kind of the reimbursement. It's a three-year contract, not to exceed $360,000 and our current backlog is 3.7 years. And basically, we, we look at the backlog and we try to match up the number of projects or number of locations that we could do to match up to the $360,000 budget. And some of that is going to be contingent on, as I mentioned, the reduced budget and then increasing the, and in unit pricing. So to date, we have approximately 400 locations that we have completed. The approximate amount of sidewalks, about 28,000 square feet. The previous budget that the city had worked with in the past was about $500,000. You know, now we're about $120,000, you know, per task order. The number of locations, sidewalk repair projects, the number of locations, approximately 90, and this is what we're anticipating for this task order. The amount of sidewalk is about 10,000 square foot. So that's kind of the comparison of what we're looking for in the past to what we're doing under this contract. And I'm showing you this table. Basically, this really kind of shows, kind of depicts, you know, over a course of time, the costs that we had for each of these particular tasks, or whether it's remove and replace sidewalks. So in fiscal year 15 through fiscal year 18, you know, we were seeing about $16 a square foot, whereas now, from 18 to 21, we're really seeing $22, so 37% increase. So as you go through all the tasks, you could see, you know, how the cost has changed based on the work of the concrete. Generally, it's going to be the material. I guess the key point is the remove and replace of the concrete curb and gutter. I mean, that generally tends to be a little bit more expensive because in many instances, that does require a longer length of repair. Most of the time, the curb and gutter, curb and gutter does require, it's as a result of street trees and the roots kind of lifting the curb, curb and gutter. It's, it's just not a matter of replacing curb and gutter because it is part of a storm drain system. You also have to make sure that the curb gutter actually flows in the proper direction of the, proper direction, otherwise you'll have ponding around that area. And then the remove and replace of just curb only, and that's what we call kind of retaining curb. And we don't really have many of those, but you know, basically, it's just a plain curb, curb without the gutter itself.
Oops, sorry.
So that concludes the presentation, but this is kind of the, you know, what, what you may typically see of a typical sidewalk repair program. So it looks like in this case, the curb gutter is probably intact, at least kind of a picture towards the center. It's just the flags or those squares of concrete that need to be replaced.
Thank you, Steve. Questions? Adam.
I guess, thank you for the presentation, Steve. In terms of the backlog on this, is there any sort of prioritization that we do if you see something like this versus someone who's got a smaller, you might want to say this gosh, or something that's more significant, might get handled sooner, or in an area that might be higher traffic versus a side street that maybe not impacted as much?
Well, what, what we do try to do is, you know, we do try to set some, some priorities, however, you know, kind of looking at the whole program itself, it, it's really kind of a first come, first served basis. So basically, once you, once you're on the list, you know, that list kind of keeps moving as we kind of get through the, you know, finishes up those, those items that we have planned to do. So, you know, what we can do is like, for instance, if we know that it's a fairly severe tripping hazard, what we do try to do is kind of patch it with like asphalt, just so kind of remove some of the, some of the tripping hazard itself. We don't like to do it that often. Again, I mentioned earlier, you know, usually you don't like to touch the area twice, but in this, some cases, if we can't get to it right away, that's, that's what we intend to do is, you know, put some type of ramping feature down.
Sarah.
Thank you, Chair. Couple questions. I, well, I just wanted to start off by saying, I'm so proud of our city for offering to pay 50% of this program. I think it's a great benefit to everyone. And there's obviously a lot of residents who are very interested in fixing their sidewalks because we have this very large backlog. And I think that it's a little tough to say, great, thanks for signing up our, our list, now you need to wait four years to get it replaced. So how much would it cost to wipe out the backlog?
So actually, I had staff kind of investigate what we did, if we needed to do those three, 3.7 years of backlog. And basically, we, what we're anticipating is, we currently have the budget of $360,000. That's the three-year budget. We probably need an additional $570,000 for, you know, the, the additional, the additional number of locations to kind of take care of that. And then, as I mentioned earlier, one of the things, what we probably won't need to have do is a separate on-call, or excuse me, construction manager to kind of go out and do a lot more inspection and just to make sure that, as I mentioned, we have the three, three and a half, or 3.7 year backlog. Some of those are obviously three and a half years ago, they probably at best, if they didn't change, that'd be great, but in all likelihood, they, over those last three and a half years, they probably have changed. So our initial calculations, if you will, probably have, will have to go much bigger or we would have to do much more improvement. So what we would have the construction management do is actually visit all these sites and make a determination, how, how much more are those improvements or those repairs are going to be needed? And so that would be the needed, but, so we would have a total cost to complete the backlog of three, you know, the 3.7 year backlog, about $1.2 million. And we anticipate we probably could finish that up as early, you know, about, about two years.
And would you say that tackling the backlog now might end up saving us money down the line since, you know, I see that the costs year over year are increasing quite a bit?
You know, certainly it will. You know, trying to tackle, I, I think one of the nice things is, you know, we have talked to the contractor, see if he even has the capability to kind of mobilize and do a much bigger contract. He, he does have that capability. So the costs, you know, we probably would want to negotiate a little bit of the cost, but we probably get a cost savings because we have more area that he could do, you know, for us, for, you know, he won't have to do as much marketing or things like that. So just economies of scale, I think he would be able to, you know, do it a little bit cheaper or faster. And the other kind of the side benefit is by obviously correcting the, these defects, if you will, the city will have less exposure to liability for, you know, tripping hazard.
Okay, thank you.
Adam.
I guess I just want to echo Sarah's thoughts and comments on this. I'd be interested in maybe bringing, you know, sort of separately bringing back sort of a review of the sidewalk program to potentially increase it. I also have a interest, I was contacted by a neighbor who would like to put a sidewalk in and want to see if something like that would qualify in an area that's, it's high traffic, that is on the, on the safe routes to school. So maybe sort of looking at maybe something along those lines or prioritizing that and maybe putting, we have our surplus which we didn't spend, we have some money left, I'd like to maybe think about this for that. And thank you, Chair Oberg, for starting this program or for pushing for it.
It's, it was one of my very few accomplishments for my first term on the council. Laura.
Thank you. So I know we have right now a safety pedestrian bicycle initiative on, underway in terms of getting community input and then we just approved monies for San Carlos Avenue. So I guess my question is around, where does this $1.2 million fit within that? And I know, for example, like the south side of San Carlos Avenue isn't budgeted, but that would be another $3 million. So I'm just trying to get a sense of kind of the bigger picture in terms of overall city initiatives and that type of thing.
I can't walk you through all those elements today, but I can provide you with a little bit of more information. So one of the things about the program, if we can back up a little bit, right, this week, because this very significant change has been made to this program in the not-too-distant past and we're really just starting to actually see the new program become implemented. So a lot of the people that are in the backlog, they didn't request to have their sidewalks done, they were reported for having deficient sidewalks. And what happened was somebody through our ClickItFixIt system went extensively through the community and reported hundreds of locations over a very compressed amount of time, which is, which generated an instantaneous backlog that we had never had before. The sidewalk repair program is paid for out of gas tax money, which is why it has a limited budget, a small budget, because it's, most of that money's being spent on roadways. And that's how the council settled on this smaller number, whereas before it was half a million dollars, but all that money was eventually reimbursed, recouped because the homeowners were paying 100%. So what we're really talking about here today about expediting the program is new general fund money. So it's really not related to the expenditures in any of the other program areas that you just mentioned. This would be, I would recommend, if this item were before you for consideration tonight, I'd likely say, we take a look at the facility reserve that we have, infrastructure facility reserve that we have, which has about $7 million in it. It's not earmarked for any specific project at the moment and that, that would probably be where I'd say, because it, based on the numbers, it looks like we need about $840,000 more in funding. That would be a source that the council might consider. So if you want to agendize this in the future for action, we could, we could prepare it that way for you.
If I may interrupt. The, I have a somewhat different, but I think gets to the same place, approach I was going to toss out there. And thank you, Jeff, for explaining about the bolus of stuff that came through because it was a, I have to tell you, Sarah, it was one of the more amazing things where we actually had people complaining to us about having to do sidewalk repairs and the initial reaction was like, they must have reported it, why are they complaining? It's because it was this anonymous reporting system. Jeff, why couldn't we simply act on what's before us tonight and then separately give staff direction to come back during the budget update process with a plan to, I'm making this up, eliminate the backlog by December 31st, 2020? In other words, because you said it would take about two years to do, so I'm sort of rounding that off a little bit.
That would be fine with us, yeah. I mean, I definitely think you should take action on this. Based on what I'm hearing from the council, there definitely seems like there's an appetite to get this work going, so it would make sense to do that.
And separately, we could, if there was sufficient support for it, we could also talk about agendizing the, the policy thing Adam talked about, which is, well, what about brand-new sidewalks that people want to build someplace?
Sure.
We could revisit that. Anyway, that's what I was going to toss out there, sort of act on what we have in front of us tonight to get that going. Have the rest of the money come back properly laid out for the budget that we're going to be acting on in a few months anyway, with the goal being to get rid of the backlog and then go back to normal.
Yeah. That makes sense to me, Mark. And I'd also, for me, what would be helpful is to have a characterization of this 1.2 million in terms of kind of level of severity of the, you know, disrepair, because that right now, when you say the 400 backlog and I'm looking at 1.2, I don't have a good sense of whether or not those reports are, you know, kind of how, how that breaks out in terms of overall risk. And I know, you know, there's an area over in, I'm trying to think, the Grace, Grace area, what's the name of the street, Graceland?
Graceland.
Where there's, you know, the street, the sidewalk is impassable and it's been that way for three years, right? So to me, like, that would be a big priority, whereas maybe something that's less obtrusive but not attractive, right, would be lesser and kind of where does that fall in this 1.2?
Which is all probably something that your construction manager would, would do one of the first things. By the way, apropos of that, I did have a, one other question. When you and Laura were talking about the, the potential cost changes, my colleagues probably aren't aware of, one of the things that we did after this bolus of reports came through is we actually, the prior council tweaked the sidewalk policy, right, Jeff, so that what was an actionable gap, we, we made it bigger. In other words, there had to be a bigger crack, for lack of a better term, before something had to be repaired.
Yeah, you reset it to sort of the legal liability standard.
Exactly, right. I just don't remember what the number is.
I think it's three quarters of an inch.
And it was never clear to me if we went back with that backlog of stuff and said, oh, that evaporates a third of them, just, or, so when you have the backlog here, I don't know if it actually includes the fact that some of the backlog, when somebody goes out and looks at it, they may go, well, that's no longer technically something that needs to be repaired.
My understanding of, from just before Stephen started, was that, that it was, the list was re-vetted, it was closer to 800.
Oh, okay. All right, fine, that answers that question. Any other comments or questions? If not, if people are okay with that idea that Jeff and I presented, that would, I'm looking to see if anybody wants to entertain a motion and then we can follow it up with giving direction to staff.
I move to adopt Resolution 2019-14. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the plans and specifications for the on-call sidewalk repair project C-9465-18 and authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with C2R Engineering, Inc. of Mountain View in a not-to-exceed amount of $360,000.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Crystal, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember McDowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rack?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins is absent. Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Councilmember Palmer Lohan?
Yes.
All right. So last thing on this item is what direction do we want to give staff? Are people comfortable with the idea of we ask staff to come back with a plan in the upcoming budget adjustment to resolve the backlog by some date certain?
Yeah, I, I think that's the appropriate place to do it so that it's in context of our other...
Yeah, right.
I think that's fine. The only question I had was about the, sort of the policy question I had, whether that could be done in that context or we needed a second?
Second item.
Second item for that.
I think, all right. So I think there's general sense that unless somebody has a strong objection to, we'll do the budget thing. And then, second question is Adam's idea of having a discussion about the policy or adopting a policy about covering the construction of new sidewalks in areas where there haven't been such in the past and what, if anything, do we want to do about that? I know you obviously want to do that. I'd certainly be happy to have the discussion. I'm not sure that I'm personally as committed to it just because I don't know what the scope of it is. It could be millions of dollars across the community, in which case...
And I think we'd, I'd be thinking also sort of a sharing program and I, I would want to prioritize sort of high-traffic areas versus, you know, some random cul-de-sac somewhere that nobody's going to. So that would be the discussion.
Adam, just a question for you. With this pedestrians and bicycle safety effort that's ongoing, do you see that type of thing fitting into that or them being too separate? And maybe it's just I'm not fully, I mean, I don't fully appreciate the background on the pedestrian bicycle safety, but I just wonder if it's all part of the same discussion? I don't know.
I asked Jeff if that would, where that would fit in that.
I'm not sure, to be honest, down to that level of detail. What do you think, Stephen? Do you have a sense?
Probably not, down to that level.
Yeah, that might be my guess. In either regard, you'd still need to make an adjustment to the policy.
Right.
You know, but we could certainly, one thing we could very easily do is try to add that to the conversation to see if it fits in any of the meetings that we have with the public. So we'll go ahead and do that already, just to have that, make sure that that's at least an option for the conversations that are taking place. But if you're, you know, if you have an interest in the policy itself, we can...
I, I think I'm hearing general interest in discussing the policy dimension, so if we can add that to the agenda pool. I'd like to ask in, in, actually, two things about that. One is, I want to make sure there's staff review of the issue of, do, can we have a rule? I'd like to ask, actually, two things about that. One is, I want to make sure there's staff review of the issue of, can we have a rule which allows us to prioritize so that we can say to one person, "You get a sidewalk and you don't," but it's fair and equitable and supportable by law? So that's just an issue that I would have to be reviewed. The other thing is, it occurs to me that this isn't, this is not a topic that, since the council is interested in, we ought to think about running by the planning commission first and have them, or is it not a planning commission? I guess it's not really a planning commission thing.
Yeah, I mean, I think it could be the TNC commission. It does not need to go to the planning commission because it's not zoning.
Fair enough. Is there a sense that, of the dius, about whether we want to have TNC hold a hearing on this and do some thinking and cogitating on it, or we just want to have it come directly back to us?
I guess, no, I think we've talked about at one of the pre, the mini-retreats, sort of the broader issue of sidewalks, not just this piece. So I could kind of see it fitting in that, and maybe that's where it went to TNC first. But, because we talked about, we've talked about Britton Avenue and some of the challenges over there, and other areas that, overall pedestrian safety and sidewalks as this topic that we might want to agendize, and I'm just wondering if that might fit better. Well, it's sort of separate, but maybe it could fit in there, so...
Well, I'm not looking to jam it in there. What I'm really doing is, we also talked a little bit about how we want to make sure that we effectively use our commissions. And that doesn't mean that everything that could go to a commission should go to a commission. That's sort of what I'm asking. I'm not hearing a general sense that we feel, that the dius feels we ought to run this through the TNC process. I could be wrong about that.
I don't, I just, I'm, so Adam, your specific case is, someone wants to construct, a private resident wants to construct?
They would like to do it. I think that's pretty cost prohibitive to put a brand-new sidewalk in, in your entire front. They were, they approached me and said, would, is that, would that fall under the sidewalk repair program? I said, "I don't know, I don't think so, but let me ask." And they said if they would, "I'd be glad to put a sidewalk in if they could, the city would be interested in defraying some of my costs." It happens to be in a sort of, what I would argue is probably a safe route to school, it's near Burton Park, it's sort of in a high-traffic area, it might improve pedestrian safety versus on a cul-de-sac somewhere that wouldn't really make an impact. And so I thought it would be worth raising as an issue to look at some of these maybe more targeted areas, if the pedestrian, if the homeowner wants to do it, would it be worth including that in the program? Or maybe we cap it or something, just look at whether it's an interest at all, because the cost point could be significant if we, you know, did do half, it might be other options on that. I don't want to get into the policy discussion, but that was just a thought about it.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to understand. Because I just, is that something that's getting flagged in the pedestrian study? I just feel like there's a study going on where we would look at it.
I think it's not, is what they said.
Well, people can map their routes on the pedestrian study, and I thought that that data was being used to flag how people transit around town by foot or by bicycle.
That's correct.
So if that is on a safe route to school, and I personally feel like the city should be paying for sidewalks on safe routes to school. I think whoever, your private resident is very generous to offer that, but, so I'm happy to have the policy discussion, I'm just...
And we could end up somewhere else on it, that's fine.
Let me offer, since I confuse things perhaps by suggesting, running it through the commission. Actually, the discussion Sarah and Adam were having, I think maybe it makes more sense for the policy issue to come back directly to the council, because we have to decide whether or not we want to do it and what scope we want to put on it. Probably anything, if we decide to do something, talking about where it goes and what are the prioritizations, that's probably something more clearly within TNC and the study group, the studies thing, to look at all different modes of transportation, which ones are we going to go after first?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay. Then we will add the policy discussion to the agenda list.
We'll do that.
Okay. Well, believe it or not, we're actually, we're ending 15, almost 15 minutes early because we extended the meeting. That's always a good thing to do. Reflections and agenda setting, other topics that people want to add on? Actually, one reflection I wanted to ask. Crystal, is there a problem with the remote control for the slide projector?
Yeah, both of the, our clickers, for whatever reason, just stopped working right before the meeting.
Okay. Well, I'm sure that you will talk to IT about that, so, okay. I just wasn't sure if it's something we were doing. Any other reflections, agenda-setting topics people want to bring up? We have obviously a lot of work that we're going to be doing on Friday that's going to result in agenda setting. Okay, good. Reports on subcommittees, boards, commissions and committees?
Yes. One, just one quick thing, we, three of us attended the council cities dinner on Friday, and it was just a really good discussion around unfunded liabilities and pensions, and sort of, to me at least, echoed some of the things we've been doing and thinking about as a good sort of fiscal step to be taking in terms of paying down some of the unfunded liabilities and some of the risks of not doing that. And it was, sort of appreciate that, having that topic with some experts on that.
I'm sorry, I was unable to get to that one, because I would have loved debating them.
There were actually two actuariales who were actually pretty funny, so I was impressed with that. That was...
Any other comments? Comments from staff?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right, then Rebecca, I'm sorry, we didn't call you up to the microphone. You would like to come up and say a few words, you've sat here the whole night, so, all right, we'll adjourn the meeting.